I know, I just want to give, I want to give them just 613 where we'll start, 613, I don't know. 614, 614 we'll start on the. All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. We're about to start our city commission meeting for Tuesday, April 15, 2025. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Good evening. The time is civility, please. Mayor?
Please move forward.
The meeting was called to orders, excuse me. Okay. Commissioner Shernoff.
Here.
Commissioner Froyman.
Here.
Commissioner Jean.
Here.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Smuckler.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lin Su.
Present.
Mayor Michael Joseph. Corm has been established. Thank you.
Item on agenda is invocation Reverend Willie May Williams from the Greater Gibbs Chapel African Methodist Episcopal Church in Washington Park. I'm sorry. Thank you, Reverend.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Let us pray. Father, as we come tonight, we are thankful for this day. Thank you for everything you have allowed us to do this day. And now, Lord, as we come into this meeting, we pray for blessings upon each and every one that's within the sound of my voice. We pray for families. We pray for our children. We pray for our schools. We want you to cover everyone, everything within this city. There's violence everywhere. But we believe that when prayers go up, blessings come down. And so we are praying now that the violence will not stop by City of North Miami Beach, will not stop by our commissioners, with our mayor, with anyone who is doing work within our city. We pray also now for this meeting, that everything happened decent and in order. We pray that you inspire our hearts, inspire our minds, so that we can think and we can deliberate and do all that needs to be done within this meeting. We are thankful for another day's journey, a day that we don't take for granted. For we read every day and we see the news and we see all of the kinds of things that are happening within our society. But again, you're God and you don't make any mistakes. So we just pray for blessings now. And we pray for this particular meeting as we deliberate, as we do whatever it is that's on the agenda, and that all is well. This is my prayer. I pray. Amen.
Next item on agenda is pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Next item on the agenda is a request withdrawals, deferments, and additions to the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Yes, I.
No, she's gonna.
Okay.
Madam Clerk?
Yes. Per the request of Commissioner Smuckler, item 9.7, resolution number R 2025-45, title reinstating the Sergeant at Arms program. That is being requested to be pulled from the consent agenda and moved to legislation, which will now be 11.6. Under quasi judicial, there's an item 10.1, which is resolution R 2025-46, titled consideration for site plan approval and three non-use variances located at the property address 317 Northeast 168th Street. That will be deferred to be moved to the main commission meeting. Per the request of Commissioner Shernoff, item 15.1, resolution R 2025-17, titled ordering an end to fluoridation of the City of North Miami Beach's water, is being requested to be withdrawn from this agenda. Per the request of Vice Mayor Lin Su, she will be adding a discussion item titled commission meeting date, which would now be item 15.6 under discussion. Per the request of Commissioner Fortuna Smuckler, we will be adding, under appointments, Samari Alenkar to the commissioner's status of women. The application will place in your areas, and this will now be item 13.3. We have another item that will be added, and may I need your assistance?
It's a mirroring item regarding disparity study that we approved on the CRA. It's going to be coming as a consent on our city commission.
No, it's going to, remember I was saying the city should share some of the costs? It's just, I'm asking to create a quick resolution to say we're going to do it.
For consent. Next.
Okay, I have some, are we finalized on that?
Those are the only changes that I have.
May I add?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So number 9.5 and 9.6 to be moved to legislation for discussion. So just to clarify, number 10.1 has been moved to which day?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
10.1?
Yes.
When was that, is that moved to?
Item 10, May 20th.
May 20th?
Yes.
Okay.
Commission meeting.
Commission meeting.
Thank you. Commission meeting. I just, a point of privilege to ask you a question, please. So I remember last time when I asked for two meetings a month, right? Your comment to this was that we're already doing two meetings a month. It's the quasi judicial.
Yeah, you're talking, that item, you have that as a discussion item.
All right, fine. We'll wait for the end. Thank you.
Okay.
That works. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, you may want to make a motion to move.
Do I have a motion in the second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Nay.
Okay. We got five ayes, one nay. Next item is public comment. Madam Clerk.
Good evening, everyone. The mayor and commissioners of the City of North Miami Beach has opened a meeting for public comment at this time. There is a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Speaker, when you're called to the podium, please state your name. The mayor and commissioner of the City of North Miami Beach recognizes the importance of civility. The City of North Miami Beach requests that all in attendance to exercise civility at all times. And our first signed speaker is Howard Berg.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. My son, Connor Berg, just recently bought a house on 159th.
Please state your name for the record.
Howard Berg. My son just. 1645 Northeast 159th Street. Just bought a house about six weeks ago, eight weeks ago, on 159th Street. Loves the house, loves the area. We get a knock on our door about three weeks ago stating that the Dade County was going to tear the street completely apart, take down all the trees, make it a five-lane highway. Nobody's going to have any of their swale or anything to go in and out of. It's going to be a nightmare for people to try to get in and out of their houses. They're going to lose whatever is there. It's going to be sidewalk to sidewalk. It's going to be a concrete jungle. It's going to be a disaster. We had a meeting within one week. We ended up having a meeting about two weeks ago in Biscayne Commons there, and over 150 people showed up just through flyers and realizing what's going on, what could happen to their property, what's going to happen to the price of their property, what's going to happen with everybody trying to get in and out of that street is going to be a disaster. From what I see, I don't think anybody from the City of North Miami Beach was there to see what was going on. There was one person from Dade County there who was the commissioner's aide, who after hearing what was going on, was very happy with what we were saying, and that pretty much agreed that he thought that the product should be cut, scaled down instead of the five lanes, keep it to three lanes, but they can make a brand-new road, they could do new sidewalks, but everything else they want to do is going to be terrible for everybody there. I just wish the city commissioners and everybody here would possibly be able to go to the next meeting to look into this a little more for the City of North Miami Beach, because they had over 150 people there in this one little meeting that in one week, just by passing out flyers, so you could see how important it was to the residents of the area. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Mr. Manager, through the chair, can you speak to that issue? I know that you did have some representation there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, we had, I think, three or four staffers there, including our interim Public Works Director and our Capital Improvement Projects Director and other team members. As we know that this is a county project, and we'll continue to collaborate with the neighboring residents as well as with the county on the project.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I believe that only Aurelio was there.
No, ma'am.
No? Okay. Because residents were there, were telling me that only Aurelio was there.
Next speaker, please.
I'll be happy to show you a picture.
Next speaker, please. Madam Clerk.
Richard Muffin.
I don't know if that issue was pulled from your agenda. It was hard to understand fluoride.
It was.
It was.
It was pulled. Well, greetings, everyone. Is there any room for comment nonetheless, or not? All right. Richard Muffin, I live in Sunny Isles Beach. I'm with the Florida Dental Association, sort of representing that organization. You know, the problem with the fluoride issue, besides saying it has been proven through decades of legitimate, good scientific research as being extremely safe, effective, and necessary for the health of our children and adults, besides saying that it's not enough, because everyone has heard that already. And there's another misconception that we can just use toothpaste. That's enough. No, it's not enough. We need systemic fluoride because it builds strength into the teeth. We need systemic fluoride, because it builds strength into the teeth. And at the small level, I wish everyone here could have been at the mayor's roundtable conference last Monday, where the room was filled with serious medical professionals from FIU, from internal medicine departments, dentists, all speaking on the importance of keeping this in our water supply. Mayor Levine Cava, as most of you know, vetoed that the commissioners vote. It could be overridden. There's a state bill in place, too, we hope doesn't pass, but we're lobbying against it. And I would challenge any of the people here that are gonna come up here and tell you things like it causes this disease and IQ problems and that problem. Please produce one ounce of legitimate literature, please, because I don't think it's fair just to come up and spout stuff like it causes this and that, like brown teeth. That's only when fluoride is very high, or these studies on IQ. Those are from foreign countries with fluoride levels way too high. There's other pollutants in the water in Iran, China, et cetera. Produce any literature. It's not fair to come up and just say stuff without one ounce of proof, okay? So, and I think that that's the essence. There's a lot of misinformation out there. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney? Go ahead.
Thank you. Is there any actual peer-reviewed literature that's critical of fluoride, and does it depend? Is basically anything in high enough concentration possibly...
This is the thing, yes. Any... Well, different medications work different ways. Tylenol is a very safe medication, but if you take a lot of it, too much, it can cause liver damage and you can die. That's where the folks on the other side would have you believe these things. Water, pure water, can cause death if you drink too much of it. So now, another thing, Latipo, at that one workshop we had, you know, he was trying to convince people that fluoride operates on a dose-response curve, but doesn't. Like Valium, if you take some, it makes you a little drowsy. If you take more, it makes you more drowsy. A lot, real drowsy. Fluoride doesn't work like that. At a very small, small, small level, there's no ill health effects. It's been proven through decades of research, and here's the last two years alone, lots of bona fide studies. There are no studies, there are no literature in this world that's actually peer-reviewed and considered legitimate that says negative things about fluoride. Every major organization in the world, medical, dental, is for fluoride. There's zero that are against it, so...
Thank you. Thank you, next speaker. Thank you. Thank you, Doctor.
Mimos Lewis.
Good evening.
My name is Mimos Lewis. I've lived in North Miami Beach since 30 years. The first time is working very well. My three, four years is not going good, because when raining, I can go in and out, because when full the water. I mean, two weeks ago, I call, and Miss Mister, Commissioner Sam, he sent someone to clean all the North Miami Beach in 541. Yesterday, before, yesterday, they got the water, when I go outside, I see this clean. I can go in and out. I say thank you very much. I never come in before that the first time. Now, I'm keep coming when I got the problem, you know, I, when I am coming to talk, to get the, when I want. Thank you very much, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Rose Lane Joseph.
You love to see me, long time. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lane Joseph. I'm not your family, but Joseph, I'm still your family.
Joseph is a great name.
Yeah.
Joseph.
My address is 1650 Northeast 11 Avenue, North Miami Beach, Florida. And tonight, I have a two reason, when me there, three reason. First one, and I say thank you to Mister Sam Z and Mister Sam B. The second time, I find somebody on the city care for the residents, is communicate with me. I call him anytime. I know he have the wife, but he told me, called me, and I text him, six any morning. Six oh one, he text me back. He, oh, excuse me, Miss Joseph, I am the one have to say excuse me. And I don't say that. I say good morning, Mister Sam. He respond to me, and he make me happy. If ya can vote for Mister Sam, I can run everywhere in my area, say, vote Mister Sam. But I know God put it here, one thing, and I want do for them, put in the list, pray. You can give your people money, money or joy. One thing you need, you need healthy. God keep you well. I don't know what I have to do for Mister Sam Z and Mister Sam B. Second, I say thank you for all my police, because I've been complaint for four-way stop sign, because too many crazy in my area. Now, I can walk. I can walk. Every more two, three accident. I request for four ways of sign. I request for his speed bump also. They all call me, come in, Miss Joseph, explain to me. I got five day for an official. My mama will shout, I'm sick, too much pain, I'm not keep the name. But they are nice, talk to me, they are bring the speed limit. After his speed limit take over last year, oh, the same thing. I hope for what now, I know politician and politician, you guy go to the election, you guy know people address, you guy know telephone number to call us. After you sit on here, the residents request for some time, remember us. Remember us to working for us to give me a pay, tie, too, to still keep both you there, because we both you, everybody here, both you guy over here. Please, I know, and my time, Mister Mayor, give me two more. And I said, thank you for everything you guy done for us, but one thing, I want you guy working for me for my speed limit or speed bumper, please.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Commissioner Shernoff.
In to address her, anybody, any citizen that is happy with our services, write a letter to us, to the supervisor or to anywhere in the city, and that will go in their file, and it's a wonderful thing to have in the file, so thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker, Marjorie, excuse me, Kathleen George, and then Marjorie Dean.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Kathleen George. I was asked to bring Miss Joseph here this evening. She called me and asked me to bring her here for a few things, but you're there so nervous, she forgot something, so I'm gonna give her a minute of my time before I continue.
Yeah, I forgot to ask for that, because too many stuff in my brain to ask, you know, too many. But the one I forgot, you call it legging trolley, why Miss Kathleen? Because some, I used to drive. Now, I can drive. Reason I can drive? I try to, but the doctor said, don't try. Sometime behind the wheel, the crap keep me, and I can got accident, whatever. Now, someone can take me to the doctor or go to the shop, I can. Sometime I take a little bit trolley, go Walmart if ya need. For what now, I hey, you want be short, please, you guy, make the way for the residents to get little bit trolley, whatever we need to go, to go, because especially me, I can drive. Please, do some type of us in this area. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you.
She took quite a bit of my minutes. I wanted to talk about reinstating the Sergeant-at-Arms program. We saw exactly what happened last time. This, a few people just decided on the dice to start having their own personal drivers. This thing was really, in a way, where it was misused. One commissioner took this thing and go from here, North Miami Beach, right there to a party that they were having, others, to whatever things they needed to do. I don't think this is where we wanna spend our money again this time. I'm asking you all to reconsider. I can understand, Mayor, we may need to have a Sergeant-at-Arms if you about to go somewhere, it's late at night, and you may, you know, like most mayors and other big cities. But we're not so big. We have people that have a lot of needs in the city, and this is not where we want our money to be spent on. Please think about it, because you can drive your own self. Take the trolley that we talking about, or take the freebie, that's what it is all about. Please don't remove our trolley and our freebies, but as far as the Sergeant-at-Arms, maybe I need my own mighty guard, too. Maybe I should call the police whenever I need someone to drive me around. But you all have your own cars. This is the reason why we give you this stipend that you're getting, forty, whatever it is, thousand dollars a year. So drive your own self. As far as you are concerned, Mayor, I can understand, you may need a Sergeant-at-Arms to take you to certain events, but please, don't waste our money. We saw what happened when one commissioner decided to take this Sergeant-at-Arms way too far. This is what you want your legacy to be, for people to understand that, you know, you're wasting our funds. There are people who have food and securities in the city. Please, don't waste my money. Thank you.
Next speaker, Marjorie Dean.
Hi, I'm Marjorie Dean, President, Ancient Spanish Monastery Foundation, located at 16711 West Dixie Highway in North Miami Beach. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to give a quick shout-out to our Spring Fest that we're having. This is our first annual Spring Fest. It is May 15th. The price is thirty-three dollars, and it's ten dollars for children. We have face painting, and we have Spanish monastery oak seeds, so that the children can go home and plant a oak in a large area with parental permission. We have private garden tours to introduce our native botanical garden that the Spanish Monastery Foundation has funded. So I just didn't want to have an event and have nobody come, not that that ever happens with any of the foundation events, but I got permission to mention it here at the meeting. And I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank the North Miami Beach, City of North Miami Beach, for the certificate of appreciation that you gave to me for my ten years of service with the Spanish Monastery Foundation. I appreciate it. I was out of town, and I'm here now doing a shout-out for this. I do have flyers that are gonna be available at the library as well. We do have labyrinth stewardship days, volunteer opportunities, the first Saturday of every month, with the exception of May. It goes on all year round. First Saturday of every month, ten o'clock, the gates open. If you have my cell, you text me, I'll open the gate for you at nine. I'm there at 8:30. Okay? So one side is labyrinth stewardship day opportunities, the other side is the Spring Fest. I look forward to seeing the Commissioners there as well, and thank you again.
Isaac Lumos. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. Lumias.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You allowed me to express myself. My name is Isaac Lumos. Address is 16940 North Miami Avenue, that North Miami Beach, Florida, 33169. I have the reason to stand before you and to express you, myself, a problem. I have two big tree in the back of my house. They're so big, they laying on the top of my wife, my house. It seemed to me, one of these day, if a rain coming very heavy, it's gonna drop. That happened to me before. Not the house, on top of the house, but it was, first time was on the FPL, but I have to remove it myself. Now, I understand when I speak to Mister Jude, I need a permit to cut the tree off completely, and I'm waiting for the money coming to do that. While I learn also, I can cut the branches with a permit. And what I do, first thing I do, in March 20, I call the city to find out when they're gonna pick up the trash. There was a big pile already there in the back of my house, and I call the city, say they gonna pick it up on April 1st, I mean, Thursday, April 1st. And I say, okay. And I tell them, but I can cut the tree branches, put it there. On 29, Monday 29, I cut the tree. I don't cut the tree, I cut the branches, all branches, I cut them, and I put them right in the pile, where everybody use that pile to throw the trash. They come from everywhere to do that. And I cut them to pieces, and I throw them there. My neighbor saw me, and they called the city manager, and the city manager said, Mister Jude. Mister Jude say, Isaac, why you do that? I said, no, I don't need a permit to cut branches off of my roof. Okay, did you call to know when they're gonna pick it up? I said, Mister Jude, yes, I called the city. City told me that they gonna do that, they're gonna pick it up on, at April 1st, I mean, Thursday, April 1st. Mister Jude told me, if they don't call me again to see what's going on, and they never pick up the trash until, until 10, April 10. They, I received a call from the risk manager, tell me that I have to pay on my own the money I do not have to clean in back of my house with the trees, branches.
Time.
I need you, please, to consider for me, I need the tree, pick up, pick up the branches, pick up the trash in back of my house, please.
City manager, is there any way you can have someone meet with the gentleman, see if we can assist? Thank you. Next speaker.
Josh Jemmy.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Justice. My name is Josh Jemmy. Address is 16750 Northeast 10th Avenue, and I'm here to urge you to take decisive action and remove fluoride from North Miami Beach's water system. This is not just a policy choice, it's a matter of public health, individual freedom, and political foresight. Just look at what's happening in Miami Dade. On April 1st, 2025, the Miami Dade County Commission voted eight to two, a resounding bipartisan majority, to end water fluoridation, a practice rooted in outdated science. Despite Mayor Daniela Levine-Cava's veto, the momentum is clear. With only nine votes needed to override, and one commissioner, excuse me, and one commissioner likely absent, the veto stands on shaky ground. Experts and residents alike predict it will be overturned on May 6th. This isn't speculation. It's the tide of history turning. Fluoride removal is inevitable. Across Florida, communities like Collier and Seminole Counties have already stopped fluoridation. Utah has banned it statewide, and a Florida Senate bill is gaining traction to do the same. The evidence is mounting. Studies raise concerns about fluoride's risks, especially to children and pregnant women, while its benefits are achievable through toothpaste and dental care. Clinging to a 1950s-era mandate ignores both science and choice. North Miami Beach has a chance to lead, not follow, but being on the wrong side of this issue is political poison. Miami-Dade's commission heard the people's voice. Will you, opposing the risks, opposing this risk, alienating a growing coalition, Republicans, Democrats, and independents, who see fluoridation for what it is, an overreach past its time? I ask you to vote to remove fluoride now. Align with progress, protect our community, and show you're listening. Don't wait for a veto fight or a state mandate to force your hand. Lead with courage, and let North Miami Beach set the standard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jimmy Levy, and then Luke Radzuski.
Hello, my name is Jimmy Levy, and I'm also here to stand against fluoride. There was a Harvard study in China in twenty twelve on eight thousand children, and all but one had negative effects on their IQ. There's many studies in America as well, and it's happening even now, and I question why those aren't publicized as much as the ones in foreign countries, just like the chemicals in the foods that are banned everywhere and are still here existent. Now, we have a revolution of revival in this country. This meeting started off with a prayer, right? Which is absolutely beautiful. It's good to, to praise God, especially publicly. But how are we gonna praise God while allowing witchcraft and a bioweapon in our children's water? The tampering of something that God created in the Bible is witchcraft. And it says in Revelation that pharmacia will deceive all nations. So it is absolutely wrong from a spiritual perspective, a spiritual perspective, and a physical, natural realm perspective. It is a poison in the water, and I stand against it completely. Thank you.
Hey, guys. My name is Luke Radowski. I actually live here in this community. Thank you so much for having us. Thank you so much for having this discussion here. It really does mean a lot to us that we're actually, I'm sorry? I, I don't want to relieve that publicly. I could tell you privately, if that's okay. I could show you my identification, but it's not far away from here. I just don't want to disclose publicly, if that's okay.
You don't have to give.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, please.
As a resident here, you know, there's, there's the debate happening here. So far, right now in Florida, forty-one counties out of sixty-seven have decided to remove fluoride. The state of Utah also just removed fluoride as well. I think this is the sensical thing. We could argue the science, but we don't even have to argue that. This is, I, I think, a bigger argument about consent. Do you think someone should medicate you? Is the question. This is what we are debating here, because if you think fluoride's good for you, vitamin D is too. Are we gonna put vitamin D in our public drinking water? Creatine's really great for you. It's great for your cognition, great for your memory, great for your muscles. I sell it. How about we put that in the drinking water here? It's, it's a ridiculous idea to say, we are going to be medicating people. Medication should be a personal choice. I would love it to be my own personal choice, and I think if you guys could empower the residents here to determine what to do with their own bodies, that would be a positive step forward. I love this community. I love the people here in this community, and it's a great community, and I hope you guys listen to the people who are truly concerned here. And without even debating it, just allow people to have their own personal choices with their own bodies. That's what I would ask for. Thank you guys so much for hearing me. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Irene Pellinger. I was so happy to see a survey sent out to residents regarding what is now being called a new recreation complex, which in my mind was renovations and upgrades to the tennis center, and additional amenities to the Deffenbach Preserve, which was originally planned to be a simple sanctuary from concrete. Unfortunately, the structure of the questionnaire is such that it includes options that are lumped together, so that the respondent cannot select what is actually most important to them, without including amenities that they may not want at all. As I wrote the manager in an email, why are we choosing event spaces and picnic tables? What if I only want picnic tables, but not an event space? Water features and a dog park? What if I only care about a dog park? Transit stops and bike racks? Only bike racks concern me. A poorly designed survey does not give residents an opportunity to share their opinion. Rather, it seems it was designed to justify someone's idea of how to design our park. I'd also like to remind everyone that we have an underutilized outdoor event space. Why would we want to create another one? I also want to talk about the Sergeant at Arms program that was just moved to the regular agenda for further discussion. I see that much thought was put into all the ways this program was abused in the past, so that these exploitations do not happen again. But its very existence is a slap in the face to residents. Public events that our elected officials attend already have a police presence. This program was canceled, and our officials were able to do their jobs, both before the program was conceived and abused, and after it was canceled. If you need a ride somewhere, hire a driver, and take the cost out of your generous contingency allowance. We are a small city. The issues you deal with are mundane and confined to the issues of the city. This program was grandiose in the past, and even with some restrictions placed on it, it is definitely grandiose and has no place in North Miami Beach. I'd also like to say that in the nineteen fifty's, we were able to get rid of polio through mandating that every child be vaccinated. And I am so glad that I was a little bit older, but I got to be vaccinated. And fluoride occurs naturally in our water.
Next speaker, Melanie Martin, and then Nene King Allen.
Hi, I'm Melanie Martin. I've never even attended one of these meetings. Better? I've never attended one of these meetings, but when I heard we were talking about the fluoride in the water, I showed up. So pardon my attire, I didn't plan on being here, but it's important enough that I wanted to be here. There was another gentleman that spoke about the benefits of fluoride in the water, and said, there's no scientific data that fluoride is bad for us. Well, I'm nobody, but I can go online and find in the journal of the American Medical Association, that it says right here, the correlation between fluoride exposure and children's IQ. These are our kids. The kids are the future. And I'm sorry, but fluoride is a neurotoxin, period. I don't want to drink it. I make sure I have a shower filter, a bath filter. I will not even cook my food in this water with fluoride. I just need you guys to, like, do a little Google search. Thanks.
Whoa, whoa, hang on, hang on. We have to have civility. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ireland King Allen, better known as Nene from Washington Park. I reverence the mayor and the board of commissioners today, and all of the staff that it takes to operate this city, this great city of North Miami Beach. I reverence you all today. And I especially give a shout out to my friend Zephyr Ahmed, your new community development director, who I worked with for about fifteen years at Miami-Dade Office of Community and Economic Development. So I know things are gonna be right in that department. Amen, can I get an amen? I'm glad to see him. But anyway, I stand before you on behalf of the residents of Washington Park and the members at the new Saint Mary's Missionary Baptist Church. I come to thank your mayor, your vice mayor, Phyllis, Commissioner Phyllis Smith, she's not here, oh, she's traveling, and Reece and her husband, who attended our pastor's twenty-first anniversary. And I'll catch the rest of you all at another time, and it's not like you all haven't been there before. But I thank you all, and I want to thank the chief of police, who was, who was not here, what is it, Panios? Where? Oh, oh, okay, hi, I'm Nene. But anyway, I want to thank you for sending out your police officers. We had one who stayed right at the gate as people enter, and we even had one that helped us with the parking. So we really thank you all for that. We really, really do. In addition to that, I was told, somebody had to school me about the use of the trolley in the North Miami Beach area. Now, as for myself, I really, I saw low ridership. But then, when I was educated about the fact that the children now have to use the trolley in the morning, because Miami-Dade County cut the bus service, you know, the bus services on Northeast Sixteenth Avenue, and I don't know about, did they cut any on Twelfth? I don't know. But since the transportation has been cut in that area, and it leads to our children and our elderly having to use the trolley, I think we need to keep all the free transportation that we have, and, and that's, that includes the trolley. And I love to see the freebie. The freebie is everywhere. They only go, the freebie only goes through North Miami Beach, because like, I see them everywhere. But anyway, I'm proud of it. I'm proud of the freebie. I talk about the freebie all the time. But anyway, I think you all are doing a good job. I'm not here to rain on any parade today. Thank you. I'm here to give you all your props. Congratulations. I think you're doing a good job, but there's always room for improvement, and I'm just happy with you. And I'm happy to see Zephyr. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. King.
It's Saturday, starting at, it's nine o'clock, is the breakfast? We got somebody, nine o'clock, we're gonna have our kickoff breakfast for, to, to celebrate our Heritage Day in Washington Park. But I'm not the only speaker here from Washington Park, so I'm not, I'm not gonna steal anybody's thunder. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister King. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Nicole Savageo, and I live in North Miami, one hundred and twenty-seventh, fifteen oh three Northeast, one hundred and twenty-seventh street. I'm here for the fluoride issue. I've spoken before. I have autoimmune disorder, and it's really important that I eat cleaner and drink cleaner. And I have to go to certain lengths to, you know, to do that, so I even distill my water. And the, the problem with our water, not just in North Miami, but also here, because I spend a lot of time in North Miami beaches, when you distill it down, it's, you can, it's more than fluoride that's the issue. But fluor, you know, the, it's not naturally occurring fluoride that's in the water, it's residue from phosphate mining, and you have to wear hazmat in order to deal with it. And in, in a hot climate, you have to drink more water, probably. How many parts per billion, you know, can you say an infant would drink, you know? If we're up north in colder climates, you might only drink a few glasses of water, you might get real thirsty around here. So I don't want to drink it, I don't want to bathe in it, I don't want to water my garden with it, I don't want to give it to my, my pets. It's very expensive to filter it out, you need very special filters. And, you know, it's, the thing is, it's, it's my body, my choice. I, we shouldn't be medicated, this, you know, I'm from, originally from New Hampshire, live free or die, you know? And so I, I stand up for things because it's important, and we all need to have a safe environment to grow up, and please consider removing fluoride. And there are substantial studies, and, you know, if you look at, you know, we weren't invited to the mayor's little workshop that she had impromptu, and if you get involved with local activism, you, you see familiar faces, and so you can see how that was orchestrated. And it shouldn't be partisan, especially when the county commissioners, it was bipartisan, five, you know, eight to, eight to two, it was a bipartisan vote, and it's about our health, it's not about people's, you know, political stances. So thank you.
Bruce Lamberdo.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. I'm looking at the agenda here, and I see item nine point five and nine point six. One says.
State your name for the.
Bruce Lamberdo, North Miami Beach. One resolution says we're gonna expand our water system, and the next resolution says, no, we're gonna reduce it. We're gonna turn over the Miami Gardens water system that we own to Dade County. So I, I don't quite get it. Why would we do that? We're gonna lose our economy of scale. I know somebody, some of you commissioners are smarting over this surcharge issue with Miami Gardens, they kind of rammed it to us. There's other ways to, to get this money back, besides giving up the system. In fact, we're gonna, we're gonna have the same cost with a reduced customer base if we, if we do that. So I'm gonna urge you all to vote against turning over the, our system in Miami Gardens to, to the county. We, we need that infrastructure, we need those accounts. The other thing was, when you do stuff like this, you want to run it by the Public Utilities Commission. It exists for, for that reason. To discuss this, we have a board, just like you have a board here, and people spend their time coming here on their own to, to oversee the, oversee the water. So I would appreciate in the future, when you come up with resolutions like this, that you run it by the Public Utilities Commission first, for recommendation that you can or cannot follow, may or may not follow. The other issue coming up is, we have this, the trolley contract coming up again and again and again. This happens every, every year, and we still never have numbers, we still don't have a study. We, the coordinator now that we were asked to, to do the numbers and do the study for the last couple of years has finally left, and no study's been done. And I heard the trolley company's gonna do the study. And now I hear we're, they're pushing a five-year trolley plan, where they're gonna replace the trolleys with new vehicles, but we have to give them a five-year contract in order for that to happen. We heard some issues here about the, the school children, children using the trolley as a school bus. We asked our city attorney here, who's on the school board, he's looking into possibly getting a school bus for these areas where, that, that are needed, like Highland Village, for example, in Washington Park, and maybe he can give you a report on his progress there. That should, we should not be using the trolleys for school buses. I mean, the, the school board has deep pockets, they collect money from every property in the county, they should be able to supply our children for that. And then finally, I, I did speak to someone who rides a trolley, one of the few people that rides a trolley, and she says, why are you running that six days a week? She said, I only need it for two days a week, maybe maximum, and maybe if you took the trolley and you, and you ran it two days a week on that route, and took that same trolley and put it on another route, you can actually reduce the number of trolleys and still serve the same number of people. That frees up cash for us to use for the lady that was complaining about the, the speed bumps and the, and the signage. This is what that transportation money can be used for, to provide for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tricia Harris. I'm here from Highland Village, and I'm here to say thank you to Public Works and Park Some Recs for the update that's going on in my neighborhood at the moment. We had some new trees put in, we had a couple of stuff done, and I really appreciate it. And I'm also going to speak about the trolley, because the kids in Highland Village use that bus, the trolley, to come home when the school bus is overpacked, because although we could probably fill two school buses, we have multiple, I believe there's up to eight buses that come in Highland Village and pick up a different amount of children at each one, and it's the overload from other entities that come from different places, and they stop there before they go to the school. And the reason that they do that is because unless you live in the very back of Highland Village on Twenty-Fifth Avenue, we are not quote-unquote "far enough" from the school, now that the school is back behind one fifty-first in the FIU area. So I am very happy to know that it has been brought to the attention. So, I am very happy to know that it has been brought to the attention of our attorney, which actually sits in a different seat within Miami Dade County that can possibly help us with that. Because I would not want our children to have to walk from Highland Village out on Biscayne Boulevard in order to get to school every day. And every year, we have to argue this and I'm one of the major people that assist the children of Highland Village to get that bus, to get them on the bus. Last year, I ended up taking care of approximately 16 and I really never brought it to anyone's attention, but I would take care of it on my own because I was able to do it. So, I wanted to appreciate that someone has brought it to the attention now. And, um, so at least I pray that we can keep the trolley going for a little bit longer in Highland Village because they, not only the children, but the residents use it for a way to get around. I thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Jeb Hanwerger.
And that's why she has the key to the city. Because she's amazing.
Thank you. My name's Jeb Hanwerger, 1091 Northeast 166th Street, Monticello. I'm here today to address the critic, two critical issues affecting our community. It's, as you are aware, this is Autism Awareness Month. Uh, and, uh, we've seen a great increase in the rise of our special needs population and autism. It's a, it's a crisis here. Autism rates have risen dramatically. One in 204 children in 2003. Now, it's going down to one in 34. Uh, there's been connections between, uh, connections with neurocognition and neuropsychiatric risks and the increase of students with, with disabilities possibly with the, the fluoride. There's a, a study that came out today. It was published on Fox News and New York Post that there may be, if we keep on the fluoridation, that there may be a doubling of the special needs population. The cost of a doubling in special needs is about, in Miami Dade County, would cost us about $250 million annually. There's a study that came out linking fluoride exposure and autism. Uh, the U.S. District Judge Edward Chen ruled in 2025, just recently. Someone said, there's no risks, but we just have a federal judge that just showed that there's, even with point seven, which they say is ideal, that there's an unreasonable risk of reduced IQ. Uh, this is much more serious of a matter than cavity issues, which we can get with toothpaste and mouthwash. You can go to any local store and there's plenty of fluoride if people choose. Uh, right now, the Florida Senate has advanced the fluoride, the Florida Farm Bill. It may pass by the time of our next vote, uh, our next commission meeting. So, it's unfortunate that we have delayed it tonight because we could've had a chance to make a difference here in North Miami Beach. I've been coming here since December. Uh, I appreciate the commissioners that responded to me and tried to make a difference for the health and safety, especially of the pregnant moms and the children. We will remember, the voters will remember the, uh, the commissioners who tried to prevent any sort of town hall or didn't show up or didn't show any support to the special needs population and to the pregnant moms. We will remember that in the next election. I ask the commission to take two actions, uh, enhance autism awareness in our community and remove the fluoride for our special needs children and our pregnant moms who are suffering already. Protect our children's hea- health, align with the growing movement across Florida before we are preempted by the state. Let's prioritize the safety and future of our most vulnerable residents. Thank you for your time and consideration of this matter.
Wendy Mesador.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Hey, Daniel, how are you? My name is Wendy Mesador. I'm Old Grove. Um, I wanted to speak on this agenda, 9.7, but first, um, I wanted to bring up, um, I wanted to, um, relate my question to Public Works because, um, there's some stuff that need to be done in the Old Grove community, especially in front of my house. The swell, um, when it start raining, it start flooding a lot of water and I called Public Work. They were supposed to come and check it out, but to this day, I never got a response from that. So, I wanted to know what's going on. Maybe somebody could help me with that. But, um, that bring me to my issue. I'm here tonight to voice my strong opposition to creating a legislative Sergeant-at-Arms position in North Miami Beach. I don't know much about the program, but I don't think the war is necessary for us, for the city of our size because we already have security protocols. I think we could do a lot better with our police officers. Um, we do need security in the city. More importantly, it is not, um, the wise use of taxpayers' dollar. Our city should focus on core services, not adding a symbolic or political position that serves little practical purposes. So, I urge that we vote no on that legislation, but I am willing to, um, listen to, um, to the discussion to see, to hear a little bit more about it. But if somebody could get me in contact for the Public Works, I would definitely appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Former Commissioner Barbara Kramer.
Good evening, Barbara Kramer. I wanna welcome Elizabeth Pierre. It's so nice to see you up on the dais. You've been hiding across the street. I haven't seen you in years. You look great. And Jasmine, who just walked out. Amazing. She came back. We need her and, um, she's a great asset to our city. Uh, I have to tell you that I'm a little appalled by many of the items that are under the consent agenda. Um, this line of thinking truly lacks transparency and it really does insult the residents. Uh, speaking on some of these resolutions is, um, for instance, 2025.43 regarding the expansion of our water service. You don't think that that's something that you all should be discussing together? Never mind the fact that it didn't go to the PUC, but who put something like this into a consent agenda? Mayor Joseph, you can look at me when I'm talking. It'd be great instead of looking somewhere else. So, that's a huge problem for me. And then there's 2025.44 regarding transferring our service to another utility. So, like Bruce Lamberdo said, we're going to lose customers, but we're going to try to sell to someone else and expand. That is pretty ridiculous. And then you're gonna need to sell part of our infrastructure. And I know how you all speak about me as one of the commissioners who thought that a public-private partnership was the right thing because that's what was sold to me from the manager and the attorneys and whoever else. But we brought it back and that was a good thing. But now you wanna let it go. And I think it's very political, what's going on here. So, everybody better look at this really, really well because it's very political and you don't see it now, but you'll see it in the future. I also know that Vice Mayor Sue was very instrumental in wanting to expand our services. First of all, it's something I talked about with Bay Harbor many years ago, but nobody ever did anything in this city about expanding. But I know that Vice Mayor Sue wanted to do this because we've been talking about it since she was running for office. But somehow, this got hijacked into your resolution and you found out about it from internally, from administration. I think that's a huge problem in this city. And lastly, as far as the Sergeant-at-Arms, you've gotta be kidding me. I know this isn't gonna pass tonight. There is no way it's gonna pass tonight. I don't know who you people think you are, but honest to God, you don't need police protection. And wherever you go, there's always police service around you. So, stop thinking that you are on some power trip and you wear a crown and you need an entourage to drive you, okay, and sit in their cars and watch you as if there's, you know, added protection you need that other people don't. Thank you very much. It's great to be here. And Hogsomea and Happy Easter to everyone.
Lorenzo Hall.
Hello, everyone. My name's Lorenzo Hall. I stay at 1581 Northeast, uh, 151st Terrace. Um, I just, hello. Oh, okay. Um, I, I just wanna thank each and every one of y'all. Y'all doing an excellent job. Y'all doing a great job. Um, I also wanted to take the time out to invite y'all to Heritage Day, which is gonna be taking place on Saturday, April the 19th. You wanna speak, Trish? It's better? Okay. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not really a speaker. I'm on the behind-the-scenes. But I'm the vice pres, I'm the president of the voters, the president of the Voters Council. And once again, on behalf of the residents of Washington Park, I would like to extend the invitation to elected officials, city managers and everyone in the audience as well is out there watching us on TV. It's a, uh, day of celebration within the city of North Miami Beach that's been taking part for over 30, 35-something years. So, once again, I'd just like to thank each and every one.
Everyone, please come out.
Police protection? Police, police protection? No. This, alright, okay, uh, so far, so good. The floor look good? Everybody look good? That's nice. So, I mean,
Your name, please?
My name is Daniel Pierre. My address is 15240, Nord East 10th Court. Okay? Step here. So, the reason I am here tonight, I just tell, to tell you, thank you, thank you for the job you all been doing, especially for the trolley, for the trolley. Because in my neighborhood, just like in my, in my house, in my house, by my gate, everyday people come in to tell me about the service they have from the trolley. They say, that's, that's the best thing so far. E- even they don't come in here to speak, to tell every one of you, thank you for that service. So, they told me, Daniel, I know you come into the meeting. Please, when you come in there, please, you mention that for us because the trolley is good. Because some of these old people, they don't have car, they just got that service. You know, that's good. That's the best thing you do. I hope you keep it. Even somebody might be, they might don't like it, but the people, care for the people. At the same time, the same people who come in to my gate, just like, if you know where you live, they will go to your gate too, to tell you, thank you. So, you also, you doing something good, keep it. Don't try to move it. Also, for the police protection. So, I could, I could say, you don't need it. You are the commission. You already have the authority. Anyplace you went, you have the protection. You don't have to just like, to scared, to thing like that. You are the commission. Anywhere you went, because just like, I am Daniel, I'm nothing, but I don't need protection. Long you do good, people follow you. So, you don't have the protection for the police. There's only one thing. Keep doing good job. Do your job. So, at the end of the year, you will be happy. When it's time for the election, you don't have to worry. You will be back. So, do good job. Listen to the people. You will succeed. Please, please, don't touch the trolley. Please, okay? So, I'm so happy. I see everybody. Keep doing good job. Alright.
Time. Thank you.
Mayor Strahlberg and after is Kazan.
How are you? Um, do I announce myself? Mayor Strahlberg. You want me to say my address? Okay. So, I see that nobody's still drinking, uh, tap water. We spoke about this last time. I, I, Commissioner, you were very upset about that last time, but I just thought it's interesting that it's still the case that we're paying for, we're paying for, uh, bottled water. And you have a Coke because it's only seven o'clock, so you can't be that tired. Anyway, what I came to speak about was really, um, the issue of fluoride. And I think that we're all aware, I think that we're all aware of the back, on the, the back of a toothpaste, it says, "Don't swallow." Mayor Joseph, you okay? Okay. The back of the flo, on the back of the toothpaste, it says, "Don't swallow it." It also says that if you do swallow it, you should contact the Poison Control Center. We're all aware of that? So, this basically leads us to, to, to understand two things. Number one, you're not supposed to swallow fluoride. And number two, if you do swallow fluoride, it's considered to be a poison. It's very clear. Um, I'm 175 pounds. Maybe some of you are heavier. Maybe some of you are lighter. It's not really clear how many glasses of water it's safe to drink, per day, per month. Is it, and it's not even clear, like, based on 100 pounds, based on 200, but there's no, there's no warning. There's, there's no understanding. Like, how, the, Mayor, do you have any understanding of how many glasses it's safe to drink?
There's no back and forth.
It's not a, okay. It, it's, it's, it should be understood that there's no, nobody here can answer the question of how many glasses it's safe to drink if you're 100 pounds or 200 pounds or if you're a child. It's completely unclear, but we do know that it's a poison from the back of the toothpaste can. And we also know that you're not supposed to swallow it. That's it. Um, the Surgeon General, he spoke in Miami Dade last, a couple of weeks ago and he made a very interesting point. He basically said, there's two choices. Either we know that, there's two, two sides. And, and I should say, this is not a political issue. It's become a political issue. It's really not a political issue. This is a health issue. I, I happen to be a Democrat, okay? A lot of Republicans are voting, uh, against fluoride. I happen to be a Democrat. This is a health issue. This is not a political issue. But it's become a political issue. And essentially, what the doctor said is that there's two, two sides of research. One side of the research says that it's not safe and one side says that it is safe.
15 seconds.
If you go, that's it. That's it. Either you have to be 100% sure that you're, that you're, um, that the medicine is right or you're, you're willing to impose poison on
Time.
your population. Thank you.
Kazan.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. Um, first of all, for the 100th time, I'm asking for this blind to be changed. You guys not sitting here for the blinding sun coming in our eyes. I can't even see the commissioner's face.
State your name, please.
And I can't see the mayor when he's looking away from people. You need to change the blind. Now, I know four of you brought back
State your name, please.
Oh, my bar Kazan. Now, you can start the time. Okay. I, I know four of you brought back the water plant from Mayor Joseph all the way to Commissioner Smith brought the water plant back. But tonight, when I looked at 2025, I see Mayor Joseph, he wants to start getting rid of what he brought back, starting with Miami Gardens. You, you want to get rid of that. We fought so hard. Uh, I remembered when you came on, we had 180 customers. Today, we are down to 170,000, 180,000 customers. We're down to 170,000 customers. Now, you want to get back, get rid of 12,000 paying customers. Now, you want to get back, get rid of twelve thousand paying customers. You know how long it take? It took us to get a hundred and eighty thousand. Now, we're down to a hundred and seventy. It's a very bad move. Not because, um, they may win the surcharge, not paying it, but we have other ways in which we can do it. We can get that money from them. And that is over fifteen million dollars we would be, we'd be losing. That brings me to your, um, Sergeant-at-Arms, two hundred thousand plus. I remember the last time we had Sergeant-at-Arms. We had a Commissioner, I'm not going to name her. But she took a deputy police chief and went touring one of the Caribbean islands with the deputy police chief. And I'm, I'm not going to name the, the island. That is how we wasted, wasted the Sergeant-at-Arms. And I used to sometimes meet the mayor in Costco. I meet him, uh, different places. Um, Commissioner McKenzie, I meet you. People can harm you wherever, whenever, but nobody wants to harm you. None. The, none of the forty-two thousand people or none of the three hundred million people in America wants to harm any one of you. We harming you here enough with our talking. So, you know, and then we have the CITT funding. CITT funding, every year, we have three million dollars. And only twenty percent of that's supposed to be going to the trolleys and the freebies, or whatever you want. Instead, ninety-five percent of that goes to those two entities. And guess what? The speeding continues along 12th Avenue on May, on my street, 12th Avenue, between 149 and 159. That's like a racetrack. There's not even a, a speed bump, nothing. I told the city manager that. I told him, in a, in a matter of a minute, how to solve that with, with four-way stops. The cheapest, four-way stops at one of the, the corners. Nothing was done. And, uh, you know, tonight, you, you want to spend money, throw it away, whatever, uh, more trolleys, more empty trolleys. Those trolleys only needed in Washington Park, Highland Village, and, and Yulita. We don't need any more trolleys other than that. But what are we doing with trolleys elsewhere? I see them around empty most of the time, and thank you very much.
Time. Barbara Pearson, and then David Zepin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Barbara Pearson. I just want to know, who, who are responsible when they cut down the trees in the area? Cause I have a pine tree that I told a guy not to cut. You're supposed to trim it, not cut it. And he cut my tree down. And that tree's been there almost sixty years. So, who's responsible when they come down and cut the tree? He told me to got, um, they say to cut the tree from the sidewalk. Where the tree is, where the tree hang over the sidewalk? There's no walk-in area there. So, I tell him, there's no need to, you know, pull in the tree, cut the tree, but he cut my tree. And I'm, you know, that was a tree that my mom gave me. She passed, and it really hurt me for him to cut the tree. So, what can I do about it? I know I can't do it by the tree, but could I get another tree?
Yeah, um... We have our, uh...
A palm tree?
What? Oh, um, we have our, our deputy, um, our deputy city manager is going to assist Ms. Pearson. If you can see him real quick.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker?
David Zepin.
My name is David Zepin, as in Zulu, Abel, Papa, Echo, November. I'm opening Zepin Capital as a private mortgage broker to refinance homes. I've seen on my Facebook page. I'm also scheming to run for the open governor's seat, praying with an E, on every daddy issue from the Conch Republic to the First Coast to Pensacola Wings of Gold. Maybe I'll be the first governor to expand Medicaid and have an earned basic income paid for with a tariff by plate. I hope your fears of fluoridated water are assuaged. Meanwhile, Florida International University, where both I and my grandmother attended in the nineteen eighties, lost twenty students to deportation. Uh, how many homes are empty or for sale within the city limits per local unhoused persons? Unoccupied office space without so much as a storage room B or a misplaced stapler? But at least our pizza parlors are now chair-free, so that's a relief. The new public seventeen fifty was visited by a busker with an electric violin and a sign. Uh, how do I get licensed to do the same thing? It's not like they have a Blockbuster Video vending machine for me to fix again, or free food in exchange for my systems analysis of finding food with the wrong price tag. I would call the local television news, but they might show up at Skylake Mall like they did during the 2023 election cycle. Does the police website have an updated version of the Miranda rights? More John Oliver 2015 and less nineteen eighties TJ Hooker? You, you now have to say you acknowledge the right to remain silent. Cash can be seized as civil forfeiture. How many terror tourists think that open carry of firearms is legal? Can we get a weapons update from our corporate masters at Alec and Charles Coke? Uh, the New Testament Book of Luke, chapter twenty-two, tells each apostle to buy a sword. Some legal advice might be handy before a unique way to celebrate Easter. If I want to carry a gun, even before the Heller decision by the Supreme Court, I would have completed my 2002 police cadet application or joined the Army or the Navy in nineteen eighty-nine like their recruiters wanted. A fast track to a commissioned officer rank. Maybe I'll just renew my several teaching credentials by next July. Enjoy the classroom cameras of my getting slapped and punched while I remember not to send violent offenders to the hospital. Happy Eid, happy Passover, happy Easter. Thank you.
Elizabeth Gentey?
Kazan? Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm Elizabeth Gentey. I'm here with Margaret Najidi to present, to talk about our event that we have on the twenty-sixth, right? Of next week, actually, uh, in two weeks. And I did send, um, a letter request with, to each one of you, see how you guys can help us, um, make this event. It's a community event, where we're going to be, basically, there's a symposium festival slash festival, um, to talk, to bring the youth to the community so they can learn more about the Haitian history. It's a poll, in pursuit to the Haitian Heritage Month, which is in May. Um, this is history, culture. We're going to have a little bit of everything. And it's going to be fun. I think it's going to be good for the community, especially for the youth. So, we requesting the support of every, I mean, each of one of you to see how we can make it happen.
As I, good evening. As I stated the last meetings, this event was taking place in different cities. Is it the first time it's going to be taking place here? So, I always hope that you guys take decision to help host that event. And it's about, uh, history, it's about the monument, it's about education. So, it will, last year, Commissioner Danieline and Commissioner McKenzie was part of it. So, uh, hopefully, you guys would think about sponsoring this event for this month. Thank you.
Mayor, that was the last signed speaker.
Thank you. Next is, uh, announcements, city...
You're going to close cup, public comment?
Oh, close, well, close public comment. Now, we go to announcements.
Hi, good evening. Before I give the announcements, I want to introduce our new production specialist to the communications team. Her name is Jasmine. I'm going to let her say a couple of words.
I just have a short blurb. Hi, my name is Jasmine Joseph. Um, short and sweet, I just want to say, good evening, Mayor and Commission, and constituents. I am truly honored to be here and incredibly grateful for the opportunity, thank you, City Manager, um, to join the team as a production specialist. It means a great deal to be welcomed into a role that supports the city's vision and community-focused efforts. I look forward to contributing behind the scenes and helping bring our shared projects to life. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Wonderful. Mayor and Commission, you should have a little packet with all of our April and May events. We have Farm Share Drive-Thru Distribution this Thursday, April seventeenth, at nine AM at Yulita Community Center. Youth College Tour, Friday, April eighteenth, at N A, eight AM till four PM, leaves here at City Hall. We have Washington Park Heritage Day, Saturday, April nineteenth, starts at nine AM at the Washington Park Community Center. We have our Business Tax Receipt Workshop, that is on Wednesday, April twenty-third. We have two sessions, one at noon and another at six, and that is here at the Marjorie and William McDonald Center. We have Jazz Appreciation Month, which is called Jazz in the Stacks. That's Friday, April twenty-fifth, at six-thirty at the North Miami Beach Library. We have National Arbor Day Celebration Tree Giveaway, Saturday, April twenty-sixth, at nine AM at the Senator Juan Margolis Amphitheater. The Eighth Annual NMPD Pao Charity Golf Classic, that's Friday, April twenty-fifth, at the Miami Shores Country Club. Dia Internacional de Libro, Monday, April twenty-eighth, at the Library. NMPD Police Memorial Ceremony, that's Friday, May second, at ten AM here at the NMB Police Department. We have Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month Celebration, Saturday, May third, at one PM at the North Miami Beach Library. UMC Free Health Clinic, Sunday, May fourth, at one-thirty PM behind NMB City Hall. Free Community Zumba, Wednesday, May seventh, at the Yulita Community Center. That's going to be at six PM. The Small Business Summit and Expo, that's Thursday, May eighth, at ten AM here at the Marjorie McDonald Center. Senior Sneaker Prom, Friday, May ninth, at one PM. Also, at the Marjorie McDonald Center. Kidnapping Movie Premiere, Friday, May ninth, at seven PM at the North Miami Beach Library. Farm Share Drive-Thru Distribution, Thursday, May fifteenth, at nine AM at Kevin R. Sims Aquatic Center. Jewish American Heritage Month, Thursday, May twenty-second, at six PM at the North Miami Beach Library. Senior Luncheon, Friday, May twenty-third, at eleven AM at the Marjorie McDonald Center. Memorial Day Ceremony, Monday, May twenty-sixth, at the Corporal Howard B. Hinson Park. Our Community Tea Party, Saturday, May thirty-first, at ten AM. Location to be announced. And last but not least, the Heart of Reading, Saturday, May thirty-first, at two PM at the North Miami Beach Library. Thank you.
Mayor, um...
Yes.
I have a point of...
Yes, you, you may have, City Manager.
To the Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, I stepped into this role with a deep commitment to serve this city, its residents, its hard-working employees, who have dedicated themselves, day after day, to making North Miami Beach a better place. I have poured my energy into strengthening this city's standings, modernizing operations, and laying the groundwork for long-term stability and success. Together, we have secured a double A bond rating, navigated complex budgetary challenges, obtained critical state and federal funding, put policies in place to protect our city's future, and defended the city against legislative mandates. Beyond the numbers, we have worked to restore integrity, efficiency, and strategic vision to the city. We've modernized departments, improved public service, and taken meaningful steps towards making North Miami Beach a city that people can trust and be proud of. And while there is still much to be done, these accomplishments were never about personal recognition. They were about doing what is right for the city and its residents. I've done so, I've done so openly and honestly, and to the best of my ability. The, the work of serving this city has required immense time, energy, and personal sacrifice. Over the past two years, that commitment has taken a toll on my family. While I remain deeply proud of what we've accomplished and still believe in the vision for North Miami Beach, I must acknowledge that my family must come first. Some may understand this choice, and others may not. But I hope all can respect it. I am grateful for the opportunity to have served this community. And with that same sense of purpose, I now step aside to prioritize what matters most to me. Therefore, with a heavy heart, I submit my resignation as the City Manager for North Miami Beach. Of course, I will comply with my employment agreement and will continue to serve with the same support, integrity, generosity, honesty, and transparency that have guided me through not only my tenure, but my career. Thank you to Commissioner Smuckler for first believing in me. And to Commissioners Jay Shirnov and McKenzie Floraman for always encouraging me to keep pushing forward. I'm also grateful to you, Mayor Michael Joseph, Commissioners Daniela Jean, and Phyllis Smith. Seeing our relationship grow over these past two years has truly been meaningful for me. And thank you, Commissioner Lin Su, for your partnership and conversations over the past five months. Thank you all for the trolley, for the trust that you have placed in me. To City Attorney Joe Geller, for your friendship, guidance, and wisdom. To City Clerk Andres Bernard, for your friendship and collaboration. But most importantly, to my amazing team. You've stood by me through every high and every low. I'm sorry I won't be there to continue to lead you. But please know that I am always rooting for your success. We couldn't have done it without your dedication, and I'll be forever grateful for the trust that you've placed in me. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. North Miami Beach is capable of incredible things. And I hope that the work we have started remains a priority for a bright future above all else. I sincerely wish North Miami Beach the success it truly deserves. Humbly submitted, City Manager, Mario Diaz.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
I know there's, um, some thoughts on this dais. I'll save my comments for last. But what I will say is that, um, this is unfortunate. And I said that when you brought this up to me. I said that very clearly. It's not what I wanted. Ask you to reconsider as well. I did say that. But I understand the pressures that you get on a daily basis. And as a father of children and kids, I can understand that certain people can't really relate and understand the type of pressures that come with that as well. But I respect the decision. I just, like I said, you know, last month was, um, mental health, mental health wellness, right? Was that, was last month? This month, right? It's this month. this job being in the public light, doing the public work, is not easy. Some people think it is. Some people can be out in the audience or in the community, or even on this dais, can throw spears left and right. But at the end of the day, we're all here to do the public good. Some people lose sight of that a lot of times. But I know, from man to man, I know you're doing, you're trying to do the best for the city. So, I'll open it up for my colleagues who want... So I'll open it up for my colleagues who wants to start. Commissioner Chernoff.
Mario, it comes with a heavy heart from me accepting this from you. I truly have considered yourself my friend now and brother that we've been together. And you've done a great job for North Miami Beach and I want to thank you. We love you.
Oh, wow. I want to start by saying thank you for the work that you've done. Like the mayor said, a lot of times, no one sees the behind-the-scenes that we go through. And I can honestly say that every issue that I've brought before you, you've earnestly worked it out to your best of your ability and that has always been successful. And so I wish you the best in whatever the next chapter. And also to the mayor's sentiments, we sacrificed time with our families, the wellness of our families, so many things. And so I commend you for making the best decision. And again, you should be proud of the work that you've done with this great city. All of the things that we've gone through, no one knows. Especially dealing with the state, dealing with all the issues that we deal with as electors and also as public servants. Sometimes it's a rollercoaster ride and like I've told you, it's like a rollercoaster ride without a seatbelt. And so you've done it with respect. You've always been respectful. You've always been thoughtful. And for that, I know that your next chapter, whatever it may be, will be great. And again, thank you for making this brave decision.
Does that mean we're accepting his resignation?
I'm not accepting it. I'm not accepting it.
Because. Open up the com. If we have the option to accept or not accept the resignation, honestly, I'd be leaning more on the side of not accepting the resignation. And, you know. You, when we first met a couple of years ago, we spent probably about three hours having a conversation. And you were ready. And you knew what you were coming into. Especially, our city was experiencing some very tumultuous times. And you put your best foot forward to make sure that you can stable this ship. And, you know, I always felt that this ship was just as much yours as it is ours. And that you were leading as much as we were leading, right? And so, you know, but what people don't know is what you have to go home to at the end of the day. No one could ever understand that. No one experiences it. Everyone individually experiences that for themselves. And, you know, there's Mario Diaz, the City Manager, and there's Mario Diaz, the husband and the father and the brother and the son, the uncle. And at the end of the day, that's the most important Mario Diaz. And so, you know, while I see you as a friend, I see you as a colleague, a brother, and to a certain degree, even a mentor, although we technically are your bosses, but there's a lot of things that I've learned from you and I hope to keep learning and to keep growing in our relationship. You know, it's a real tough pill to swallow, you know, that the leader, the captain of the ship, is deciding that he wants to step aside. It's a tough pill to swallow. Because I value relationships in that they don't always have to be perfect. I think really, true leadership is overcoming your challenges. True leadership is looking at a scenario and saying, you know what? I may not get along specifically at this moment with this person. Or we may differ on some issues, but overcoming them really is where the power is. And so sometimes we sit up here and we look to have, you know, managers that will do as we want them to do. Or people that we can get along with or that, you know, will not serve as any barrier to our political or career progress. And, you know, the reality is sometimes we need people who are able to say, hey, this is not a good idea. Or hey, maybe we should be going in this particular direction. And so, you know, when I look at five, six managers over the last five, six years, you know, it begs the question, what are we doing wrong or what can we do better? And we have to ask ourselves that question as leaders. What can we do better? Because there's no consistency, there's no continuity, there's no progress when every two to three years, we have a different person in that ship or leading the ship. It doesn't happen. And so, you know, I mean, that's my long-winded way of saying, I really appreciate everything you've brought to the table. And you gave it your best. You did what you could within, you know, your realm of responsibility and ability. And this is not, this is not a negative thing because you're doing it for the right reasons. Your family's number one. And any organization needs to understand that and provide for their staff and for their team members the ability to balance, right? And so hopefully, we take that into consideration and we do a better job at allowing people to balance their work and their life. But thank you, Mr. Manager, for everything. And we appreciate you. And like I told you earlier today, you know, it's all love, my brother. All right? God bless.
I agree with a lot of the sentiment that the Commissioner shared. I think you have like really given it your best shot. And I know that, like, I know your family is very important to you. Because I remember several days ago, there was a family member that you had to attend to. And I just, the best that I could do was to give you the space for that. But I know that you have done your best. You have brought your experience, your connections, your, all of the assets that you bring along with you, Mario Diaz, City Manager, that you have collected over the past 20, 30 years. You give it your all to North Miami Beach and I really appreciate that. I thank you for, you know, like, really, there's no holding back when you wanted to give North Miami Beach what you did. And I believe that you did your best. It's a shame to have you go. I think also, like, it's, I think Commissioner Floraman said it well. There's something wrong with us. Anyway, yes, and I hope you will keep in touch with us. And, you know, and if you change your mind, I think we have till the end of tonight, right? Okay? So thank you very much for your service and look forward to a good future for future friendship. Thank you.
So the six of us vote right now that he can't leave, does that mean he can't? You know, I met you through the League of City dinners and we would coincidentally sit together because of Virginia. And it was at a Christmas party that I think we were parking and we crossed paths and you said anything you can help with because you knew we were looking for a city manager. And he didn't say it asking for a job. He was sincere and he helped because that's who Mario is. And that's when the light bulb went off in my head. He's going to be our city manager. Took a few months, but you were our city manager and you were supposed to be our city manager for 20 years. It's been a hard day today. Some of us have been able to just tell each other how horrible we feel. And, you know, in back there and in the hallways and stuff. And that's something special when we can all come together and feel the same way about something or someone. That's how special you are. But family always comes first, always. Family comes first and that's what you're doing. And I just want to say to some people out there, be careful what you wish for because you will never get a manager like Mario Diaz. You will never get a manager that has shown up here seven days a week, has shown up here on legal holidays working, has been here since nighttime. You can complain and complain all you want, but you will never get a manager like Mario Diaz. So remember, be careful what you wish for and if you think you can do it better, you're wrong. Mario, I wish you the best of luck. But I know that we will always see you. I know we will continue to see you and I know that you are making the right decision because you're doing this for your family and for no other reason.
As appointed privilege mayor, thank you very much. Mr. Manager, the day I got this job, I didn't even know you. I met you after, didn't know you at the league. But I have to say, having served with a lot of people in city government over the last 30 years, that I can't remember ever having a manager who worked harder, who put more heart in or who I cared about more personally. Because you're not just a great city manager, as I saw someone comment. You're a great person. I have admiration and respect for what you do, but especially friendship for the dignified way that you've worked for the benefit of this city. It really breaks my heart to see you feel that you have to do this. And I would, man, I would argue you out of this if it was anything but protecting your family. That's the kind of man you are. And I just, I just pray for you and your family and I pray for this city to be able to find someone that can try to step up and match the standard that you've set. I've seen a lot of them and you're at the top. I'm going to miss working with you, my friend.
Thank you. I know, Mr. Manager, you asked for, what was it, 45 days? I said, can you do longer, extra 15, an extra 15 and do 60? I just want to, you know, understand, I want to, I want to, I want to respect your wishes. Like I said, I try, we've talked for you to reconsider. So are you agreeable to the, for the 60 days? I know you said you had to follow up with your wife beforehand.
Yes, sir. The 60 days would carry to June 13th, which is right around the time that my kids come out of school. So I'll be amenable to that.
City Clerk has a point and personal privilege. Go ahead, City Clerk. I'm sorry, before we move forward.
Manager Diaz, I just want to thank you for your professionalism, your devotion, your friendship, words of encouragement. I remember when you came here, you accepted the job and you used abbreviation site. As you know, I keep that. I want to say sincerity, integrity, generosity, honest, transparency. And those words, those abbreviations, they all, what you displayed to me. Thank you for including me and everything with how the city works. I appreciate every time I have to go upstairs and we have to talk about something. You listen. Chica, you give me your words of encouragement. It means a lot. I do respect and understand the importance of family. I'm a mom, you know, I get it. I wish you nothing but the best in all your future endeavors. God bless you and your family. Thank you again.
Thank you. So, because I don't want to belabor the point, I know we have a pretty packed agenda. Not going to make my flight, it looks like, but this is more important. So yes, so I guess, like I said before, are you amenable to the 60 days? And I know we have a following meeting in May. We can discuss transitioning from there. I know you have a great deputy next to you right there in Andy that knows us all very well. So we can take a very nuanced approach on this moving forward. Very nuanced because like, you know, these types of transitions have, like, the way they've happened in the past, some, like, there's been a lot of criticism. I want us to be very nuanced and really doing a thoughtful approach. But, you know, for the time being, manager, like I said, you're amenable to the, so for 60 days, I mean, I don't know if I have, can I get a motion?
160, did I hear that?
I'll do that.
Yes, I make a motion for 60 days.
And I'll second it. All in favor, say aye. Aye. So we'll, we'll talk further on this issue at our next commission meeting. And, like I said, I'm not going to, I'm not, I'm going to miss my, I'm going to miss my flight, but.
Well, you're going to miss it?
I'm going to miss it. I'm going to definitely miss it. Unless I go on silver, which the wife said no. Wife said no.
You may not get there for it.
I know, right? But that being said, I know the next item is announcements.
Commission reports.
And also, one thing that's really important. We said this last year. We've, this manager has fought really hard with that water surcharge.
Oh, no.
This manager fought last year and last year it was saved because of him. This year, I'm not sure we can accomplish it again, but he has worked so hard and continues to work so hard for our city to help us with this water surcharge. It has been non-stop and thank you so much because we really couldn't have done it without you.
And in respect, and I want to give respect to some of the employees here. Like, I want to ask for at least a 10-minute break. 10-minute break. And we'll start at 8:15. So do I have a motion for, for, what was it, like a? Recession, thank you. Recession, thank you. We're gonna reconvene the meeting. Well, we don't have enough for a quorum, so... No, we can do announcements, though. We can do announcements. Nope. The commit, well, well, we, I mean, commission reports, sorry. Sorry, manager, commission reports. We don't need a quorum for that, right? Um, see? Excuse me, we're about to start. We're about to reconvene to do commission reports. And I have a couple of stuff to inform my colleagues on.
Commissioner Sharnoff?
No, it's Paul. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, I have to go first after all that. All right. Mario, Mario. Don't do it. All right, we wanna thank everybody. First of all, Hoxamaya, and Happy Easter, everybody. For those celebrating Passover, have a wonderful rest of the Passover. And eat matzah, don't fret, not too bad. Tour de Force, thank you to everybody who supported the Tour de Force. For those of you who don't know, April seventh was a Tour de Force. Five days that went from our police station to Daytona Beach on bicycles. Okay, so that's fifty, fifty-five miles a day. Each day was the bike ride. You could take part in one day, or you can take part in all the days. But it was wonderful. It's a ride for remembrance of the fallen officers. And then we have every motorcycle policeman in both, all three counties, four counties, that stop every intersection and work you through so you don't have to worry about traffic. You don't have to worry about anything. They feed you. It's a wonderful event, so please support it. If you can't be in it, and you don't wanna ride, give them money. They need money for the families. And it goes to the families of the officers that have fallen. So it's a wonderful, wonderful event. Farm Share, April 17th at Ulieta, nine o'clock. Please join us. It's open to all, starts at nine o'clock until the food runs out. You know, it says till twelve, but I don't think we ever make it to twelve. And, you know, that's a sad thing for our community that that many people need the food. But we're there every month now, so please attend. My community engagement event this month will be April 22nd at Allen Park. And that's six to eight. Bring your family, bring your friends. And what do we do there? Whatever you want. You have a one-on-one with me, and that's your opportunity. So please do that. Come. Arbor Day, the 26th. Free trees to residents of North Miami Beach. The same amphitheaters, library space that we're gonna share with the event for the Haitians. We're gonna do it in the morning, they're gonna do it in the afternoon, and they offered to, you know, still let us keep it where we were. So thank them. And again, we give away trees. We have five different trees, and ask our arborist. I don't remember the names. Okay. All right. The most important thing that we're gonna talk about is the 159th Street. We, as a community, need to do something with the county. This major thing that they're gonna do in a residential area and take away their swales and take away their, you know, every, everything from sidewalk to sidewalk on both sides and put a thoroughfare through their, this is a residential community that they're making into a thoroughfare. And I have no problem with them making a thoroughfare. That's not my problem. I have a problem where they're making the thoroughfare. You don't make a thoroughfare through the middle of a neighborhood that's been a quiet neighborhood for fifty, sixty years of people. And if you are, then buy all the houses. You know, take all, make offers to every owner that lives on that street, cuz their life is gonna be hell when this thing goes through, if it goes through. And we need to make that loud and clear to our commissioners, who we're friends with, the mayor, everybody, that that's a bad idea, but it's got a lot of momentum, so it needs all of us behind it. Thank you.
Commissioner Florimond.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, so Autism Awareness Month is this month, and, you know, I wanna commend our city police department. The other day, I was stuck in a little bit of traffic, and, you know, I was wondering what was going on. And then all of a sudden, I saw like at least twenty or thirty city police vehicles that were wrapped in honor of Autism Awareness Month. And so I stood there watching car after car after car, waiting for North Miami Beach. And low and behold, we were part of the team, and we were representing in support of Autism Awareness Month. So, kudos.
Excuse me one second.
Yes.
In relation to that, you have to see the motorcycle that we got wrapped by a company that has some of our fallen officers on it and stars in Stripe, the whole motorcycle. It's beautiful.
Okay. Okay, well, definitely, we have to, we have to put that on, on our social media as well, which I see is, is doing, social media is doing its thing now with PD, so you're getting a lot of likes, getting a lot of likes on there. But let's continue to do what we have to, to bring awareness to autism. Also, Happy Passover. And there's, what did you say that I, I wanna make sure I say it right? Hot, well, he said, he said something else. Hag Samea. Hag Samea. Hag Samea. All right, there we go. Happy Easter. Earth Day is also upon us, so let's do our part in making sure that we combat climate change. And also, I wanna give a shout out to Chef Lean. She's a Haitian chef that I believe has already broken the record, the Guinness Book World Record, for over a hundred and ninety-two hours of cooking nonstop. So I wanna give a shout out to her, especially Haitian Heritage Month is next month. And she is, you know, putting Haiti on the map in a positive way. And she is, I believe, already broken that record of a hundred and ninety-two hours straight cooking. So congratulations to Chef Lean. Where is she? No, she's in Haiti. So she's, yeah, so she's breaking that record, and so that's a, that's a, that's a big deal. And also, I know we have a few minutes, I have a few minutes left. So I wanted to, is it, is it appropriate now to take a look at this agenda? I had some, some requests that I wanted to make in respect to the agenda. Is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Or should I do it at, after, after, yeah, change?
Mayor, can you wait for the commission reports, and we can do?
Yeah, no problem, that's fine. Thank you.
Commissioner Jean?
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. So I wanted to start off by thanking again the manager and also thanking Public Works for the speed bumps that were installed at DeRose Park. Those of you who live in that area, thank you for adding that added measure. Also, a shout out to our teens that were part of the Bay Nanza. They took part in a cleanup, a beach cleanup and a bay cleanup recently. And again, our college tour, the second part of our college tour will be happening this upcoming Friday. I did wanna also commend and also ask for support from our Public Works Director from Coastal. So I wanna thank Ms. McHenry for really being attentive to a lot of the attention that needs to be brought to when they do bulk pickup and they leave behind so much stuff behind. They went out into a community and actually cleaned up, cleaned up a few blocks where there was a lot of leftover debris. So if Coastal is hearing this message, please, please tighten up with that. Also, wanted to welcome back Liz and Jasmine, who are back on our team. And Mr. Manager, I know that we had asked for a community meeting with the library and some of the partners. I'm not sure if that's something that's still in the works, but I wanted to make sure that our residents know that that's coming up. And also, Happy Easter and Happy Passover. Thank you.
Commissioner Smackler?
Well, I wanna start by wishing everyone a happy Passover. And what time is the deadline to file taxes? To send them? No, 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 to send them tonight. Is it like eight o'clock, nine?
No, no, no. No, because of, no, because of Florida, we have an exemption till May 1st.
Oh, yay.
Because of the stuff that happened last year. So if you're based out of May, so if you're based out of Florida, then you, like, it's a list of states. So if you say Florida extension, it'll come up taxes, so.
Oh, okay, did you hear that, Florida? You didn't have to file today. You have until May 1st.
I have to deal with a lot of clients.
Okay. Also, I wanna wish everyone a Good Friday, a Happy Easter, a Happy Earth Day. I also want to make mention of the passing of Miami Commissioner Manolo Reyes. And thank you for his service of many years to the city of Miami. I want to ditto Commissioner Chernoff's sentiments about 159th Street. And also, Mr. Manager, I did see the picture you sent us all with, I think there was four employees at that meeting. Thank you for, for sending that picture. It's, so it's Autism Month, and I just wanted to, to just like make a comment about this thing with fluoride and autism. So it's not a secret, Raquel Regalado has two children with autism. And she's a very educated, smart woman, and she's also a county commissioner. And she actually was one of the votes to keep the fluoride in the water in the county. So I'm, I, I just can't imagine that an educated woman like that, who has children with autism, would, would just feel, or first of all, she wouldn't want any harm or, or cause of autism to anyone, especially, well, no mother, no mother wants that, but especially a mother of two wouldn't want that. And also, May is Jewish American Heritage Month, and I know that it was mentioned. But at the library on May 22nd, from six to seven PM, we're gonna have Jewish American Heritage Month. There'll be kosher bites and beverages and games and arts and craft to celebrate our Jewish American heritage. And to our police department, thank you so much for always taking care of our residents, our families, our, our employees, and, and the commission. And lastly, to the manager, you have, this is second to last meeting with us. You'll come and visit us, right? Sure you will. But thank you so much for everything that you did to make North Miami Beach a better place. Thank you. That's it.
Vice Mayor Lin Su.
Happy autism, I mean, sorry, I was gonna say Happy Passover. Happy Passover to everyone. It's also Songkran Festival in Thailand, so it's our New Year. Easter's coming up this weekend, and Earth Day, 22nd. Be sure to consciously recycle every day, not just Earth Day. And Arbor, looking forward to growing plants with you and our Arbor Day event of giving out trees, so that we could do more of that. I'm happy to announce that the Crestview Tower residents are now back in their homes after almost four years. Right now, they are connecting to the electricity, and there are some leaks still, but most of the people have moved in. Remember that they were, yeah, this is wonderful. I wanted to, I wanted to thank, first of all, Senator Jason Pizzo, City Manager Diaz, and also our Building Director, Daniel Zuna, for helping them and, you know, working with them on that. I have spoken to the property appraiser, I saw him yesterday, so I had a chance to tell him about this. Apparently, he already knows. I'm assuming that our staff have been communicating with him. So we wanted to work on something for them, because they had to rent while paying a mortgage. And at the same time, their HOA fees have gone up crazily. And, and we need to, I'm trying to do everything I can to support them. The next thing is another shout out to City Manager Diaz. So I wrote all this before, you know, I'm so sorry, I wish you could hear this before you decided to resign, not that it would matter. But great job on taking the lead in opposing the tax collector fees. We're gonna have that on our consent agenda. That is amazing.
Yes.
You know, it would've cost the city another $500,000. And thanks to the City Manager Association, led by the city manager, he's the president or the chair, I don't know what they call them there. But he was there, and he took the lead in the fight against the tax collector's fees, the 2% margin, which is saving the city half a million dollars, again. Okay, so then again, we, I did a ride-along. So any other residents who has never done a ride-along, I'm gonna tell you, it is fun, exciting, especially when they have like, I don't know, a Code Two, is that what it's called? And the sirens go off, and you can like, you know, run through red lights, and like, it's just extremely fun. So I'm looking forward to, you know, my, my handgun practice with them, the shooting practice with them in the future. Also, that, that ride-along is not just limited to me. Any resident can join them. It was really fun and exciting. Okay, and then we've been sending out a bunch of surveys. Now, if you're listening from home, please be sure to check your email. We have surveys now, we have a survey that actually ended April 13th. Is that able to be extended? I think that's, that was the one that a resident, Mrs. Pillinger, mentioned that, you know, the survey was not quite complete. Do we have another, do we have an extension on that, or is it just ended? We can extend it. So there's a survey out for the Recreation Center, okay? And if it's like, you know, the details of that is not satisfactory, please be sure to like send us an email, so we know, like what you really want, okay? If the survey wasn't, wasn't complete. Now, we have another one, I think it's WGI, right? This is about all the road safety. I think, Andy, you sent it out? We have another survey coming out, coming up, and if you can fill those in, too. It's important that we hear what you have to say and what's important to you. So if there's like a road that you need a stop sign, like yesterday, somebody came up to me and told me that like along 177th, there is no stop sign, it's just a racetrack. So that's dangerous, especially because it's right south on the southern border of Grenadines Elementary School. Okay? So we need to like be really proactive about telling us what, you know, we don't have eyes and ears everywhere, so your input is very important. Okay, so upcoming meetings, so I have my Neighborhood Voices event in Sun, in the Sun, for the Sunray Area Thursday, this Thursday, the 17th, at 6:00 PM. Call the office for details. And then 159th Road Expansion, May 1st. Okay, the county is coming back to propose the alternate. So initially, they wanted to do a five-lane, and now they're reducing it down to a three-lane. Go take a look at those designs and see if it works for you. If it doesn't work for you, speak up. And I will be there, because I wanna make sure that if there is something that we need to advocate for at the county, I can go to the county with your comments. Number, the third one is UMC Free Clinic is coming back. They, they liked us so much. So I wanna tell you a little story before we get back into that, and I'm taking a lot of time, excuse me. But the UMC clinic, it's free. So in this past Saturday, we had a patient who tested her sugar, and it was like at 500-something. So, yeah, so she's a diabetic, she lost her insurance, her disability insurance, and didn't know where to go, because she didn't have any money. I don't know if she has money, but the point is that she came to us because she didn't have insurance. So she tested her sugar, the doctor sent her to the ER. Yesterday, she came back to the clinic, UMC clinic up in Miami Gardens, and took three months' worth of insulin for herself, and basically, we saved a life. So this initiative is amazing to me. Also, a family, two girls, a mom, came over, and they had just lost their insurance as well. You know, there was just so many, so many people out there, please help me spread the word. It's so important. It is going to be Sunday to accommodate all religious, you know, all, everybody who observes anything on, you know, other days. We have Sunday at? After church, 1:30. No, Sunday, the 4th of May. I, I don't know, I mean, but I mean, I know you don't have Sundays, Saturdays, so we go Sunday. So anyway, anyway, so, so I'm just so happy that we saved a life, and I'm looking forward to, to helping, having a healthy North Miami Beach. Thank you very much.
Mayor? Is it possible, Vice Mayor, in the course of what you're doing, that maybe you could start to try to make a record as to why all of these people are losing their insurance suddenly? It'd be very interesting to hear why that's occurring, cuz if it's, if it seems to be that prevalent, there's, there's a problem somewhere.
Yes. Because if they had insurance, they could get Cobra, right? If they lost a job, right? There would be Cobra, but I mean, if they had completely lost their insurance, it's, right, but it's still concerning, yeah.
It's expensive.
Yes, it is.
Mayor Michael Joseph?
I'll be quick, cuz I wanna move this meeting along. Good evening, everyone. I wish we were having a meeting that was a lot quicker and a lot less, you know, upsetting. But that being said, I have a couple of items I'm gonna bring up to your attention. On May 1st, I'll be having my, we'll be having our State of the City address here at the Lippman Theater. Looking forward to the community coming and showing, and learning about what's been going on, or showcasing what's been going on for the last four years. The last time we did this was back in 2020, I believe, in February. And this will be a good time to recap on all the great work that we've done in the city. Looking forward to each one of my members doing a video, expressing what they, you know, wanna highlight and what they wanna really focus on moving forward. And I'm looking forward to just expressing my thoughts and my vision to the community at large. That's May 1st. Also, I got an invitation from Alex Desume when I went to go see, see him regarding, you know, water expanding to North Miami, and he invited like myself and also extended, asked me to, asked him if we can extend the invitation to my colleagues to Sister Cities event in Japan in September. I forwarded the invitation to the city manager and seeing if any one of, any of my colleagues would be open to going to this event. It's a, it's a cultural sharing event. Other cities will be going, and it'll be a good opportunity as a, as a group to, to, to do some cultural exchange. do some cultural exchange. I'm also working on doing the same thing, we're going to Israel as a commission. And I'm waiting for different, because there's different groups that could sponsor it, like, but, and, and if you have anybody in mind that could assist us, please, help me with that. But this is the first one, I had an official request and, and invitation that I could extend to my colleagues, so look forward to that invitation being extended. It's in September, if we do decide to go, we're gonna have to work out some scheduling in regards, because that's where our budget, our, our budget hearings are, so if we can go, let's see if we can work it out, and I'll leave it up to the staff to work those Also, I'm gonna be, you know, I haven't had, I've had a couple of my Sunshine Meetings, I'm looking forward to having a Sunshine Meeting with Commissioner Chernoff on, on a couple of issues. One thing I wanna partner up with him is just a couple of things that have been kinda hanging, and we've been talking about this, honors, proclamation keys and everything else. I wanna work with you on that legislation together and do a Sunshine Meeting to speak that, speak on that, and really have a very, you know, nuanced and very respectful for all our respective, respective positions and really expressing ourselves through proclamations and, and other ways of honoring. So I'm looking forward to, and I know he's, he's gonna be, he's gonna be open to doing that, 'cause he's always been open to having discussions, I'm looking forward to that. And last but not lea, well, also, I was looking at the, and Madam Clerk, this is a question to you. I know we're gonna, I'm gonna speed along with those appointments, 'cause I wanna get those appointments out of the way when we move prior to we get to the consent, but there's one question, like, I was looking at the, the Vice Mayor stuff is quarterly, right? It's like, so how many months is that?
It's four months.
Four months, right? Okay. So no, because I was looking, I was looking at the dates and stuff, so the, 'cause I was, I was looking at the.
It'll be effective May 1st, the next one.
Okay, so that's, that's something, May, I'm thinking five. So from the first, May 1st, it was five months, so I was gonna.
It's every four months.
If it's, what, that's not quarter, it's three, it's three months.
It's every four, it's every four months.
Every four months?
Yes, every four months.
So thank you for clarifying that, 'cause I thought it was three months, but thank you for, for clarifying that. That being said, I wanna move forward and I wanna.
Mr. Mayor, on your behalf, in addition to the State of the City event, that'll be held on May 1st.
Yeah.
We also have National Day of Prayer.
Yes.
That'll be May 1st at 10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m.
At the Center.
Yes, that's gonna happen as well, National Day of Prayer, yeah, we do it every year. So that's gonna happen on the date, on the daytime, in the morning, and then we'll have the State of the City later on that evening.
County events in November, four.
I wish, well, we have another event that, that's happening in our community as well on the 30th, right? It's a.
The official invitation hasn't been received by our office, so I don't wanna.
All right, all right, all right. I know it's coming, 'cause somebody helped out on that, so I know it's coming. That being said, I wanna move the, the agenda along, but I also wanna see if we can move out of order on a couple of things, one of them being the appointments, so I wanna get that out of the way. Can I, can I get a motion in a second to see?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
So can we, Madam Clerk, I wanna do a motion to, to approve all.
Altogether.
All together.
Okay. Third item from point, excuse me, from appointments, item 13.1, 13.2, and 13.3.
And the walk-on, right?
Yes, that's added.
Okay.
Okay. 13.1 is appointing Commissioner Jay Chernoff as Vice Mayor effective May 1st.
Motion.
Second. We're gonna do it all together.
No, we're gonna do it all together.
Oh, together, okay, sorry.
Okay. Point two, actually, that doesn't need a second. Anyway, appointing Eloine Cox-Harting to the General Employees Pension Board. Then the walk-on item is appointing Samari Allen Carr to the Commissioner's Status of Woman. Motion, please.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, we did, add a motion in a second. Any opposed? Not opposed, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Commissioner Florimond, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, in light of some of what's occurred regarding, regarding our city manager, I, I think that, you know, we should, you know, be very expedient with this meeting and allow people, you know, some, some time to kinda have their conversations with him and et cetera. And so I wanted to see if there was the ability to remove some items off of this agenda. And one of them would be 11.2. The other one would be.
Yeah, that's first reading.
11.1.
That's second reading, by the way.
Second.
Yeah, we pay for advertising.
Yeah, we pay for the advertising.
Okay, okay, so then, okay, I'm sorry about that. So 11.2.
Point one is moved to, I'm sorry, I'm wrong, I'm saying the wrong.
When do you wanna move them to?
The next, the following. The next, the next item, yeah.
But the motion would be to defer them to the May Council.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, the ones.
Well, I mean, is the 11.2, is this something we can wait, another month? May I, Mayor? Oh, can I respond? Well, I mean, somebody is, can someone answer me about 11.2?
So before, I, I understand we have a, we have a consent, like, this is what I wanna try, but if we gets, if we can hold off on the discussion items, let's hold off on the discussion items, let's go through the agenda as quickly as we can, and then if, and then take it from there. Let's, can we just do that? Let's go with consent, can we do the consent items? And then we'll, because I just wanna just clean this up as quick as can.
Move to approve the consent item.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, City Attorney.
Mayor, that's items 9.1, 9.2, 9.3, 9.4. And let me see if there's one more. That's it.
No.
No, no.
9.7. And then we had the add-on.
11.6 and 9.7.
9.6, 9.5, 6, and 7 have been.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's an add-on about.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the community redevelopment.
Yeah, that was put, that was for 9 points, it was supposed to be 9.7, right?
Where there was a 9.7, it would be.
Oh, 9.8, 9.8, 9.8, 9.8.
So it'd be 9.1, 9.2, 9.3, 9.4, and 9.8. The 5, 6, and 7.
Now, okay, 'cause I know we have a commissioner that likes to read the entire thing, but do I have to do that, Mr. City Attorney, or I could just go by what you did? 'Cause I, I.
Under the circumstances, unless there's objection, I think we could.
Okay, so do I have, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So do we, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Passes unanimously, so we finish with our consent. All right, now we're going into 11.1 legislation.
And for the record, again, 10.1 was moved to May 1st.
Okay.
Date certain, that's important.
11.1, do I have a motion introduced?
So moved.
Second.
All right, this is second reading, Chief.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. This, this ordinance is the second reading. There has been no changes since the first reading, it's just basically being, giving law enforcement the ability to effect arrests on those that are prohibited camping in the city of North Miami Beach.
Mayor, this is also to ensure that we're in compliance with state statute.
And for the record, the constitutionality of this is, of the law that mandates it is somewhat questionable. I just wanna be on the record as noting, we do have to comply with state law until it's overturned, so we don't have much option, but I just wanna note on the record that arresting people because they don't have a place to live is suspect constitutional.
Thank you, Chief. Do I have any discussion on this item? Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Chernoff?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Florimond?
No.
Commissioner Jean?
No.
Commissioner Smakler? Wait, I just wanna make sure, yes means we're passing this, right? I just, okay, yes. I'm not sure.
'Cause, okay, just, I can't.
I'd like to, I'd like to know why everybody's voting no on this.
Well, I can't, can I pause?
Please.
Okay, okay, just so we can pause before we go on. Technically, this is the law.
Mm-hmm.
It is the law of the land. So understand, we are agreeing to follow the law in, in producing this legislation because we're required to do so. That's what this is. So this was, legislature passed this and handed it right down to us, so that's what this issue is. I agree wholeheartedly with the city attorney on this. However, as policymakers and given the fact of how legislature has moved and powers that be have moved, we can get kind of, you know, back and forth.
I must caution you, personal feelings aside, and mine are strong on the issue, that this could provide a pretext for the governor to remove council members for not doing what, in his opinion, is their legal obligation.
To do.
The law is on the books and in force. It is in force until such time as it is overturned, and perhaps people who share strong feelings about what this is trying to do might consider adding a note of protest to a yes vote and stating that they're doing so only because compelled by the law, but they believe the law to be unjust, but it is at this time until overturned, it is the law of the state of Florida.
So, so would the, would PD be able to do this without making this change? Technically speaking?
Well, I mean, you would have to.
It would, I mean, it's the law, however, the, the way that is designed is that we have to draft this legislation to have it in our books, correct me if I'm wrong? That's the, that's what I'm, that's what I'm. There's other, no, but there's other, I understand your standpoint, but there's other things that we don't, I mean, look, you don't need to sign on to follow the law, the law is the law. You don't need to sign on, right?
Right.
This is somewhat different because there's requirements set upon us based on how the legislation was passed, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, where it requires us to do these, to make this legislation. Now, certain things don't, because at the end of the day, like, hey, if, you know, I'm not gonna go, well, I'm, I'm gonna be mindful about, about, I gotta be a little bit careful what I'm about to say. So what I'm saying is that, yes, we're required to do this per state law.
And, and one might view this as a trap for the unwary.
Yes.
To try to weed out officials that don't share the draconian point of view that led to its adoption.
Um, as far as, since you said we're, we're kind of back in discussion on this, right?
Yeah, so we put a pause, I don't know how, from Robert Rules.
Let me say again, Mayor, for the record, we operate under Robert's rules, but Robert's rules is supposed to assist you, not.
He's a parliamentarian, so I, hey, you're the parliamentarian, so I'll go with him. So what, what were you gonna say, Commissioner?
No, I was just saying, as far as PD is concerned, since we're kinda back in discussion, what efforts are we making to, to prevent this, or to assist people in finding places to stay, you know, and, and to try to curb this issue?
And, and if I can add, can you just tell me the difference about to what you've done now and what you will do once, if this passes?
So, thank you for both of your questions. So, nothing's really gonna change as to how we've operated in the past and how we will operate moving forward. We will use this law as a last resort. We've, our intentions have never been to affect arrests on homeless or those that are camping, rather get them help. We have a partnership with the Homeless Trust, we have different resources that we use to offer them help, safe space, shelter, food, et cetera. If they choose not to accept those resources, we, you know, we try to set, move them along their way, but never is the intent to effect an arrest.
Yeah, because that's really where my major concern lies, is, is with that issue right there.
And Mayor, if I may add to this, and I apologize, Commissioner, I don't mean to interrupt, but part of, part of this is state statute now allows, if a business calls because there's camping or a homeless person in front, and they notify the city and the city doesn't do anything to address, it then allows that business to sue the municipality, and so that adds an additional liability. So the purpose of, as the, the chief said, it's not to try to push those who are unhoused out, we continue to try to find opportunities to assist them as much as possible, but we are trying to, with the ordinance, at the very least, under current law, protect the city from future liabilities and allowing us to be open to lawsuits.
And, thank you, Mr. Manager. And as far as, as far as your, your steps, are those, is that written policy, or is, is that what's understood to be?
It's understood, we have a community policing unit, and they're badly tasked with assisting those homeless people in our city, so they, they have a lot of resources that they use, a lot of contacts, that, we have a rolodex of people that we can call to assist them. We also have a, a portfolio where we keep track of all our homeless and to make sure that they're okay, and we check up on them. So anytime we encounter new homeless in our city, we document them, see where they're at, and kinda keep tabs on them that way. But we don't have, we don't have a policy per se.
I hate to, you know, ask for you to do additional paperwork, but is there a way that you can put, make that an actual policy? Would that be in line with this particular legislation?
We, we can, I mean, it wouldn't hurt.
I mean, because I, I don't wanna, I wanna stick to this point, but I also want to make something clear that relates to this type of like mandate that's coming, or whatever mandate it might be. And I just want, and just so we can have a consensus, and I, I just wanna express, get that at least transmitted to the, to staff, if there's something that can be done administratively, please do it administratively in that sense. In this aspect, this is, I mean, outside of the law saying specifically we have to write the ordinance, if it can be done administratively, then do it administratively. Because this puts us in a very awkward situation, because we know what, what, how this could be utilized or weaponized in other means.
Correct. Right.
So you feel the consensus, that consensus is made clear to staff and attorney about how we feel, if something can be done administratively, please do it so. So I'm not gonna cut, I'm not, I understand, but that being said, like, but.
Well, yeah, listen, I, I appreciate your, your, your foresight, Mr.
Protect my commission.
I appreciate your foresight, Mr., Mr. Mayor, I really do. And, and, you know, this is just one item, but we, we can see a lot more.
But you gave, you gave direction that this has to be, he could add additional policy.
No, exactly, but what I'm saying is, this is, this is one item, and we see, we see where a lot of this is going.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we're, we're in position for such a time as this. And, you know, we, we have to, we have to do our job, right? So in that sense, if that, you hear the consensus on those steps being administratively documented, okay? So I'm ready to.
And, and to, and to the attorney, so if it did not pass, the governor can remove all seven of us, or just the ones that voted against it? Just wanna say goodbye to some of you.
No, 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 wait, hang on, hang on. That's not what happened.
That's a three of us, that's fine.
Make clear, that's not what happened.
The vote, we didn't, nothing happened.
We're gonna read, we're gonna read.
No, but I do, I do want the answer, I do want the answer to that question.
To answer your question directly. Thank you. Yes, we're gonna read it, please. I have a legal opinion, and that's my legal opinion. And I've practiced longer than a lot of the people that are giving legal opinions to the governor, but he's the governor. So I have grave questions about the legality of his removing people based on a vote, and because of that, it's difficult for me to read his mind and see whether it would only be the people who voted a certain way, or whether he could interpret it as meaning the entire body. Their justification for what they've done in the past is already very questionable in my mind, so I don't think it's proper, but that doesn't mean that they won't do it, and how they do it is crystal ball stuff. I just, I can't know.
Commissioner Jean?
Yeah, the question that I had for the state law, does it, does it require for the police department to do a sweep, or is it triggered only when certain businesses or individuals? I'm, I'm speaking to this point because you look at Hanford Boulevard, and when you drive down, there's still a lot of homeless that are, people with no homes. and when you drive down, there's still a lot of homeless that are, um, people with no homes that are there. So, would this enforcement require us to do sweeps? Because in that case, I drive around and I see a lot of homeless. So, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of speaking to the state law. What does that require? What's the intent as it relates to enforcement?
It doesn't really speak to that. It generally, it, it generally takes place when we get a call for service. So, if a resident calls, a business owner, or if somebody's driving around, officer observes it firsthand, then we can take action.
If an officer finds someone that's in distress, then the officer without a call may feel that it's necessary to initiate the protocols because they don't want to leave someone in distress. But I, I'm not, I agree with the chief, I'm not aware of anything that mandates a particular type of policing when there's not a call.
Correct.
No, 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 but our community, when they're up in arms about a homeless person being near their house, they're gonna call us to do something. And the chief can tell you, I was sat on the homeless trust for many years, and the police don't want the homeless in their car because they defecate when they're in the car. They don't want to be taken anywhere. They want to stay where they are. And, you know, it's a mental illness. It's not a, anything else, and we have no mental illness facilities anymore, and that's the big problem. So, we've got to be very careful where we tread on this, and, and I will revote. Thank you.
All right, uh, Madam Clerk, you heard that, we're gonna revote.
And you may note your protest if you wish.
Like a motion to revote?
Uh, do I have to?
No, you just, uh, Mayor, uh, uh, according to Roberts.
Yes.
As the chair of the meeting, you determined that further discussion
Yes.
existed among your colleagues.
Cause I needed my colleague to be okay.
To allow your colleagues to fully discuss the issue.
Right.
And if there's a more technical mechanism, again, Roberts is supposed to help not get in the way.
Understood. So, Madam Clerk, do another roll call, please.
Commissioner Chernoff.
Yes.
Commissioner Florimond.
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Smackler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sue?
Yes.
Mayor Michael Joseph?
Yes, next item.
Can I, may I just?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So, we, we, we do have a policy that pertains to this legislation here, so, this ordinance. So, I'm not sure if you have it, but we do have a policy, a homeless policy. Okay. Sure, absolutely.
Yes, all of them.
If you can get us a copy, that'll be good.
And it's outlining pretty much what you're asking for.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Chief.
Uh, next item.
Motion, ordinance, twenty-five oh-two.
Twenty-five, no, no, that's, uh, we, 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 um, that we pushed it to, we tabled it to the next.
I, I, this is the discussion I have to have, because I don't think that, this has been, I have been on the PUC for about two years. We have had delinquent accounts. We are so catching up with that still. Last year, we had to take the general fund of four million dollars to replenish our water plant. And now we're putting in an ordinance that will actually guarantee that the, that the property owner, the landlord, is going to be responsible for their tenant's bill if the, they disappear.
So, we should keep this in?
We should keep this.
So, okay, so you wanna, it's first reading. Um, so, can I have a motion to introduce?
Motion.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second to introduce. Um, is there any discussion on this particular ordinance? First reading, though. For, seeing, well, first reading, there.
No, first reading.
Uh, uh, public comment, public comments, first reading on this issue. I'm gonna open up a, public comment for this issue. Do we have any, uh, one on the audience that wants to speak on this particular item, eleven point two?
Would you like the director to speak?
Well, it's kind of self-explanatory. Um, seeing none, I'm closing public comment, bringing it back before the dais. Do we have any discussions on that, on item?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call?
Commissioner Florimond.
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Smackler?
Yes.
Commissioner Chernoff?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sue?
Yes.
Mayor Michael Joseph?
Yes.
That's the six-year.
No, first reading. Uh, next item is eleven point three, renaming code designation of portion of South Glaze Road between South Miami Drive to Northeast Twenty-first Avenue as Saint Fort Drive, sponsored by me. Um, this is my item. I have Mr. Saint Fort here in the audience. Evan Saint Fort, who's been, um, a stalwart in our community. He's been on the, his, well, just talk about his family. Um, his family's been in this community for a long, long time, providing services longer than I've been alive.
Move to approve.
What? But just, this is a very special moment, um, uh, and I would like to have him come up a little bit to, I know, you're, you're, you're a man of few words, but you like to take a lot of pictures, but I was wondering if you can come up real quick, Mr. Saint Fort, um, and to speak to the, the quality of care, the, the volunteerism that you and your family have put forward to the city from the Chamber on down. You continue to give back, and this is just one, um, small piece we can show our appreciation in doing so. You've sponsored, I don't know how many events. And, I don't know, you had countless events in the city, and you continue to do so without any accolades, but the simple fact that you want to give back. So, Mr. Saint Fort, please, uh, the mic is yours.
Well, thank you for giving us the floor. Uh, first and foremost, I wanted to say thank you to everybody for even considering doing something like this. When, um, I got the news, I told my family about it, and they were all like so surprised and so hysterical. Um, kind of like what you mentioned, Michael, um, my family, just to give you a little bit of history, has been in the funeral industry for over thirty-plus years. Father started the company overseas in Haiti, and, uh, we have three funeral homes there, and from there, I decided I wanted to get into business, and so I went to school, and we opened up our first funeral home in the States at North Miami Beach. And so now, from this funeral home, we've been serving the community now, I think, twenty-two years. Um, and like Michael has said, usually anyone that knocks on our door for any help, um, my parents, myself, and the family, we always usually say yes. That's been tough for us because, um, you know, I, it's, it's hard for us to say no specifically to anyone in our community. But, um, my parents kind of raised us, you know, to just always give back, and so my father always told me, you give back, you know, God will continue to give you. And so that's just always been the way we've, uh, been, and, um, our goal also is to help the community of North Miami Beach, because we want to see the best for our, our community, because we are here. And so anything that's being done with the police or whatever is taking place, I make sure that I'm involved, um, because I want to see the best for the city. Or we want to see the best for the city. So, thank you, uh, for even considering this. This is huge, and we'll continue to do the best that we can do for the community and the people.
Do I have any thoughts?
Move to approve.
Second. I'd like to have a discussion about this.
Yeah, uh, yes, so we can have a discussion.
I think unanimously that we all approve.
Yes, yes, we're gonna do that. I, I will, but, uh, uh, the Vice Mayor has a.
I do.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I have to thank you. I mean, I think I've, every, every event that the PD has, for example, I've seen, I've seen you sponsor it, and you've always been around to support the community. I think it's like very important. I think it's, uh, what you do is substantial, it's, uh, it's meaningful. Um, at the same time, when I, like today, I just saw a lady who really deserves a street named after her. And that's Sally Hayman. We don't have a street named after her, we.
No, we, we, we have a, we designated her first.
Which one was that?
Uh, what, Snake Creek Canal?
She has the whole canal.
Yeah, she has the whole canal.
But why is it so called Snake Creek Canal?
That's better than a street.
Do we have a street for Ron Silver?
Um, Madam, Madam.
No, we have a building, but not a street. My, my point to saying this is, I think that, um, I think that our.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's Ron Silver Boulevard, one eighty-third.
And the building is named after, this building is named after.
Ron Silver Boulevard, according.
Yeah, no, in the, in the S. Center.
Um, Madam, Madam Commissioner, Madam Commissioner, from moment of personal privilege, um, I'm sorry, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Last meeting.
I know, last meeting. I, I want to milk it.
Um, Madam Vice Mayor, i- i- if, if we may proceed with the topic at hand, please.
So, my point is to say that, like, I think that.
Concerns at another time.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
If we can address those concerns at a different time, but if we can proceed with what's on the agenda at this time.
Okay, so, got it. So, let's, um, continue.
No, well, no, like, and to, to your point, like I said, I'm gonna be working with, um, Commissioner Chernoff. We're gonna work on this legislation together, because we, we've been talking about this for quite some time, and make sure that we do it the right way. And, and understanding the history in the city, because you, as far back as you gone, and I, and from my, and given the fact that I'm the titular head, and I have, from a Sam Rowan's standpoint, that this is my position, but you, you have in-depth history behind this, and I have to respect that.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna, that's why I want to work with, with.
So, I say we table this until your meeting with Commissioner Chernoff?
No, 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 no. No, no, that's not, no, no, that's not.
If we, um, and, and, um, Madam, Madam Comis-, Madam Vice Mayor, thank you so much for agreeing to stick to the topic at hand, so that we can move this item forward. Um, and, and I, I, I wanted to just add.
Yeah, we do have a motion.
You do have a motion and a second. I just wanted to say that I'm in support of this. Um, your family, uh, means a lot to this entire community of South Florida, and now moving across the country, actually. Um, and you're expanding into other businesses as well.
Yeah, we've opened up in, um, Fort Pierce, we've opened up in Maryland.
Right.
And so, yeah.
And you're also expanding in other business areas as well, and, and it, it's just what you've contributed from a socioeconomic and also philanthropic, uh, um, angle to our community. Um, and you are synonymous with North Miami Beach, um, and especially the Chamber, right?
Oh, a hundred percent of the Chamber.
And so, i- i- it is, um, it is our honor to, to, to do this, so.
Thank you.
Very supportive.
So, I got a vote.
And I just wanted to mention, um, there was that little girl that died that the police department was told to fed about a few years ago.
Yes.
Yep.
Um, I don't remember, I'm, I'm sorry, I have, actually have a picture of her in my office and.
Yes, we did the service for that family.
The service, they paid for like everything for them. Thank you. So, I remember thanking you that day, I'm gonna thank you again.
You're welcome.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay, nothing personal.
Okay, next item.
Mayor, if we can jump to eleven point five, we have the consultant here, um, that, um, would like to present, um, out of respect to them.
Let's go to eleven point five.
Thank you, sir.
Do I have a motion to introduce?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. It is, uh, Ms. Henry?
What happens?
Um, if I can have our procurement director as well.
Isn't it fluid control?
Procal.
We're not doing.
He asked if it can be, if it can be. It's a trolley.
Procal.
Gentlemen, if you can give me one second as IT helps them load up the, the presentation, if I can have our, our procurement, um, director. Mayor and Commissioner, um, so I'd like for, um, for our procurement director to just kind of walk us through very quickly on what the item, um, calls for, so that we are, we are clear. Um, can you kind of explain the process?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, so we are in the final one-year, uh, renewal term for this uh, trolley maintenance, I'm sorry, management service agreement. Typically, in the final year, we do market research, we look at the contract to see if we're going, uh, that, if we're going to discontinue services or reprocure. Um, at this time, we've decided to, uh, renew the contract or request for a renewal for ninety days instead of the, uh, the standard one-year. That is to review the current, uh, presentation and, uh, contract that's being presented by the current servicer, uh, Procal. Um, they have, uh, provided an option for us to, uh, kind of reimagine the trolley services. So, they are, um, a lot more streamlined and really service the community as we've been, uh, talking about for several months now. So, um, at this time, we're going to, uh, have a presentation by Procal, and this is gonna give us an opportunity to see what could be, uh, for our trolley, for our trolley services over the next, uh, couple of years. And, um, we, we are gonna bring it back in ninety days to determine if we're going to go this route. So, this is an opportunity for us to view and make that decision for the, uh, the final year of services.
Thank you. You guys ready? Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Uh, my name's Jason Moyer. Uh, I'm the Director of Operations for Procal Mobility.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor's staff. Uh, my name is Justin Kales. I'm the Senior Vice President for Procal Mobility.
Good evening, I'm Ed Carrion. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Procal.
Hello, Sam Goble, partner of Procal.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I want to express my deepest gratitude to the Honorable Mayor Michael Joseph, the esteemed Commissioners, our dedicated city manager, our city clerk, city staff, and of course, the wonderful residents of North Miami Beach. North Miami Beach, we heard you. We've taken the time to listen to the concerns of the community. We've reviewed the transit data, studied the operational costs, consulted with experts in risk management, and ensures, and most importantly, we've had meaningful conversations with each and every one of you to understand your vision for the future of, for transportation in our, in our city. In the attached agenda, we propose service improvements and service enhancements to boost ridership, increase ridership satisfaction, and bring about a two-million-dollar cost, reducing the financial burden of our community, improving ridership experience by cutting the average wait times for a bus from seventy-five minutes to forty-five minutes around the clock, and creating new revenue opportunities through advertising partnerships, including vehicle wraps, interior display screens, helping generate funds that come back to the city and the community. One of the, some of the, um, things that we saw is the current headways that go from ninety minutes, seventy-five minutes, sixty-two minutes, to one route that's up to a hundred and twenty minutes. And we've made, in what we propose in the, um, attachment, how to improve those headways down to forty-five minutes. Where we'll also in- introduce some supplemental services in the, in the Uliida area, and use some of the Miami-Dade County-funded routes like Route seventy-five and Route nine A to stop the duplication of some of the routes and, and, um, and make the service, um, more optimized. In that, we saw some of the fleet of some of these trolleys, as you guys see, that are getting near their useful life. Our company, in conversations with some, the city manager, city staff, some of the, many of the Commissioners, were introducing to buy five new vehicles to bring to the city. As you see here in some of the service area maps, we would introduce some of the shuttle vehicles like they use, um, in Sunny Owls, and some new EV vehicles that are powered and electric. Some of the service enhancements that we would do is, we would retire some of the underperforming routes while maintaining access to all the destinations, improving the headway, eliminating low-performing bus stops, and giving the city something, um, that a private contractor like us would do is have a vehicle replacement plan where every year you would get a new vehicle as we proposed. We would share some of the advertising revenue with the city after, um, with the net profits. And we would also, with the ridership experience, we would produce a new app for the city where you would see the trolley buses, you would see the Miami-Dade County buses. It would give an opportunity for residents to see all of the services at once that's going through all the city of North Miami Beach, surrounding areas, including any of the, uh, multimodal and train services. We have a lot of pride operating service here, as you know. Procal Mobility, five years ago, North Miami Beach was the second contract that we had. We now are a national company that operate in over twelve cities. We headquartered here in North Miami Beach, right in front of the Jackson North. We take a lot of pride serving here. You saw some of the residents that came in today and spoke about the service and how important it is. Just to some of those, um, uh, many residents spoke. Our company is always open to make any adjustments that the city thinks that is needs. We're open to it, we're flexible. Um, we want to thank the Commissioners, because you guys are very passionate about this service. We listened to you to make, we made some adjustments, and the city manager and his staff. We did this coind jointly, and, uh, you know, we appreciate your time and we appreciate the city. And we're here to make any modifications across this service, and we put a proposal here to do, um, you know, continue for five more years with some extension to be able to cover the costs for the ve- new vehicles that we're buying and the service that we're bringing forward. with some extension to be able to cover the costs for the new vehicles that we're buying and the service that we're bringing forward.
Kelly, can you go over some of the routes, the maps themselves? I believe that was in the presentation, but if we can just kind of highlight that and what those changes look like.
Okay. If you look at the map in front of you, which is the service maps, if you look at the gray, the little boxes area, this service right now has two buses that services the Uliida. One of the things that we proposed is to have one bus go in there so it won't double lap the service. It would extend 1.5 miles to Golden Glades. And it would still do, and will still reduce it from 60 minutes to 45 minutes, improving the service. And in this area, we'll also propose two electric SUVs that would do on-demand that would supplement that service. In this map, you will also see to the right, on the right of the map, there's something called for Miami-Dade Transit Route 75 that goes into Eastern Shores. This is one of the lowest-performing routes. And that route that's provided by Miami-Dade, it doubles with that route. So through the study, we saw that this is a route that can be eliminated so we could use the resources from the funding that is allocated to be able to do, buy some more vehicles and make the routes more optimized. One of the changes as well, if you, Route 9A, which is provided by Miami-Dade Transit, goes all the way to Eastern, goes all the way to Aventura. We heard the concerns of Commissioners, the public, and the study. And we saw that that one route goes up every 20 minutes to Aventura and they all meet, all the buses meet at Walmart in the back of Walmart where there's a multimodal bus ride. So our residents could catch those buses and go anywhere. They could go all the way to Aventura on a Miami-Dade Transit route, or they could go anywhere in the city because they all stopped there. One of the things I didn't mention is, but it's in the proposal, we're going to be working with the city and doing marketing and community outreach. So before anything goes out, we're going to be working with the community, community stakeholders, and educating everybody on the services. What we want to do is educate everyone on what are the services that are out there so we don't duplicate the service. Right now, the city currently pays us $10,000 a month to lease vehicles because the city needed more vehicles for the service. Once this is implemented, you won't have, that's $120,000 right away a year you're saving. And you, the city will be able to save that money and use it for whatever services you need.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Let me see if I bring it back to the dais. Do I have any discussions on the presentation? Commissioner Turnoff.
Thank you for bringing the proposal. I think you've really done your homework and brought a good proposal to us. I want everybody to be clear that we are, the one thing that Phyllis has been complaining about, about our own trolley is being eliminated and saving us $10,000 a year. That was totally not servicing our residents. A month, a month. Well, $120,000 a year. That's a wonderful thing. The question I have is that the five years that you're asking, and I understand the investment you're doing with new vehicles, that's pretty extensive to put electric vehicles and on-demand and the system, I don't know how we're going to implement it, that, you know, people call it and everything. But that's wonderful to have. In the contract, what kind of protection do we have as a city as far as if we're unhappy with your service, if it's not working out and we sign a contract for any period of time?
Commissioner, to answer that, that's one of the items that we'll be negotiating within the 90 days to bring back a contract to you. In the past, in other contracts, what I have done to help fix that concern, there's a huge cost that the vendor puts in for capital improvement. We're talking probably between the five buses or whatnot. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's probably over a million or pretty close to it, yeah.
Yes.
So typically, what I've been able to negotiate in past cities is that there's a, still a termination for convenience clause, but there's a prorated aspect for the life and the value of the asset. And so, the further along you get into that contract, the less that asset is worth. And if we terminate on year four, for example, then there's an opportunity in which, whether it's year one, four, or five, there would be an opportunity in which the vendor can say, hey, I've got plenty of other clients. I can just take these buses and go somewhere else. That's fine. Or the city can say, hey, we're going to purchase whatever the value is after the depreciation, depending on the year in which the termination for convenience is. That's been something that's regularly been done for different type of contracts, and I think there's room for us to negotiate that here as well.
Thank you.
Harman.
Thank you so much. Great presentation. I was watching it from the lounge. And my question would be, Mr. Manager, as far as the contract that they currently have and some of these clauses that Commissioner Turnoff was referencing, aren't those clauses transferable and just adjusting the numbers to reflect what we're looking at right now?
So currently, all but one vehicle is owned by the city of North Miami Beach, and they're in the end of life.
No, no, I understand that part. What I'm saying is, as far as any language relating to termination for convenience or KPIs and things of that sort that Commissioner Turnoff was talking about, we have the numbers here, right? So we know what they are, for the most part, right? So we have those numbers. Are those, is that same language not transferable to the new agreement?
For the most part, there's nuances depending on this proposal that they've offered and how they would like to move forward where the city needs to kind of review that and work with the city attorney to ensure that the city is protected as well as understanding the upfront costs that they're bringing to the table as well. So the majority of your answer is yes, but there are nuances that we just got to make sure that all parties agree on.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, barring any significant, barring any significant issues with putting this agreement together, are we able to, I'd like to make a motion to approve for the five years with ProCal?
Well, to answer your question, you can make the motion to go ahead and move forward with that and just add the language, "subject to reaching an acceptable agreement between the city and the vendor." And we'll make it our business to do something, as we always do, that will provide the protection. And in doing so, will be guided, imparted by your comments, we, as the manager said, we typically include a termination for convenience clause. But where there is a large upfront investment by the vendor, we do have to be cognizant of that fact. And we can't, you know, terminate 60 days in when they've invested in new equipment for a five-year period. It's a convenience to the city to allow us to amortize the costs that they would be charging over the five-year life of the contract instead of having to pay it all upfront. But nonetheless, we have to have a right to terminate, but if we do, there has to be some agreement on, I would call it a termination payment. Technically, that's not correct. It's a way of thinking of it. But what it really is, there has to be, it's not based on them making a profit for a five-year period. Presumably, they're in business, they're operating at some profit. But it's based on recouping what would otherwise, absent an agreement, be a large upfront cost for us that's amortized. So we have to separate in some manner. If we terminate early, they don't get the rest of the contract. But we do have to address, they have a pretty good idea of the portion that constitutes the upfront investment that's being amortized, unless we have reason to disbelieve or disagree with that. And that's why staff comes in. It's not strictly the attorneys. I mean, we don't know what these things cost, but staff has a pretty good idea. So we agree on a number and say, if this is the upfront cost, depending on how much of it we've amortized through the payments, how much do we still owe for what would, could have been, would have been an upfront cost? And make some arrangement that they can get that back, but they will not continue to earn the profit by executing the remainder of the contract. I'm sorry if that's.
No, no, no. I'm hearing you clearly. I just, like I said, the numbers are here, right? So my question was, and I appreciate your answer, is in the way that the motion would be framed, would that be the appropriate way to frame the motion?
Subject to, now listen, if for some reason we were completely unable to reach a contractual agreement and with all these very nice, well-dressed gentlemen that are up here with, in all earnestness, I didn't see that their attorney was here and he, or she could be, you know, problematic. If we could not reach a contractual agreement, which is unlikely but not impossible, what we would probably do in consultation with the manager, sniff, sniff, we would probably look to bring it back to you and say, there is a difference between their position and ours that we can't reconcile. And do you want us to hold to our agreement, void what you voted because the contractual details are improper? Or do you want us, in the interest of having it go forward, to yield on some contract demand that their counsel is making for the benefit of getting it done? Or maybe instruct us to try to bridge the gap? We won't agree to something that we think doesn't protect the city or is going to cost an improper amount. But that doesn't mean we're just going to say, sorry, deal's off if we were in that circumstance because you've asked for it. We'll bring the contract issue back to you in conjunction with the manager.
And.
And we would let you make that decision and say, you're right, we can't yield on this point. Or, you know, we really want to see this work it out.
And Commissioner, to the attorney's point, even if you approve the overall premise of the five years and the new, and the new service that they're recommending, we would bring back the contract for approval for you, hopefully sooner than the 90 days. But I wanted to make sure that we had plenty of time to do that.
So I'll second his motion, but I still want to continue discussion.
With that stipulation.
With that stipulation, but I still want to continue discussion.
Pardon me? Well, that's not technically my motion.
No, no. Can you clarify?
My motion was, my motion was.
Can you clarify your motion?
It's five, it's the five years, right? Subject to the staff reaching an agreement with ProCal. And if that doesn't happen, then it would come back.
All right, so.
Well, it's still coming back regardless.
No, no, no.
Unless, unless it's a impasse in regards to wrapping up the nuanced issues.
Right, right.
So that's a motion and a second.
But I still want.
No, we're going to have discussion. We're going to have discussion.
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second based on that.
Who's the second? Commissioner? You're still the second?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Now, we're going to open up for discussion for the rest of my colleagues.
Could I?
Oh, oh, oh. Commissioner Smucker, sorry.
Okay, thank you. So I met with you a few weeks ago, maybe it was last week or the week before, whatever. But I don't think you said it now. If you did, I apologize. You had mentioned that you would wrap the cars with advertising?
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
So then when that gets wrapped, how are you going to split that?
So whatever the cost is, whatever money comes in, whatever the profit is, we'll split it 50/50 with the city.
And have you done this with any other city?
Yes.
And what type of a profit does it, more or less?
So we're estimating in the first year to around $30,000 to a year.
$30,000 total or?
No, and net.
From.
Yes, that's what we're estimating.
15.
Cateful advertising.
Okay. Oh, yeah, we have to make sure it's.
And one of the things that we're looking at is actually handing you a check versus taking it out from our invoice. Because if we hand you a check, you can do whatever you want with the money versus if we take it out of our invoice, you never see it.
Okay.
That way you could utilize the money.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing is, so you're going to eliminate the route in Eastern Shores? And you're going to eliminate the route to Aventura Mall?
Yes.
Okay. And are you eliminating any other route?
No, there's two buses on the Uliida route. So there's going to be now one bus on there, but we're going to add two supplemental vehicles that could supplement in the area where somebody could either call in to get picked up or get picked up on-demand in that area.
What about Highland Village?
That vehicle will still go through there, and we're going to reduce that down to 45 minutes as well. We're going to reduce the wait times. Right now is about an hour and some minutes.
So how is it that you reduce it?
So Ed, you want to answer that?
So there's a couple of segments that we've looked at that can be eliminated and/or, you know, some of the stops moved over. So one of the things that we looked at when we started looking at these alignments is making sure that we don't take anything away. That anything that we move or change can be supported by other services. So like you said, on Route E and Route A, you know, those are already being serviced by Miami-Dade. On these other routes, the changes that we're making are basically alignments. So instead of, you know, doing a lot of turns, we're going to go straight down and we'll move the route over, stops over.
And we looked at some of the stops.
We include also in the contract that this is not carved in stone for five years and that those details can be adjusted. But there could be a financial consequence depending if the adjustment was minor and didn't require additional force. That's one thing. But if we said, oh, we want, you know, two extra vehicles or something, then that obviously has a financial consequence.
And one of the, so we looked at some of the stops that were low performing. Like there's probably only, let's say, two people that would get on that stop a week. Those are like low-performing stops that, you know, that's how we would, we looked at some of the low-performing stops that gives us, save us time from the vehicle going through the route.
Okay, and then you did a study on this?
Yeah, we hired a consultant to do a study, and then we looked at all of the data that we've collected since we started here in the service.
So I do have similar concerns as Commissioner Floramond if we wanted to, for whatever reason, cancel the, you know, not wait five years in it. And it's not that you necessarily are doing a bad job. It also could be, you could sell the company if you, you never know. You can never say never. And I was never going to move from my home in Miami Beach, and I was never going to be a Commissioner, so here I am.
You'll never sell that Miami Shores building.
Yeah. So anyhow, so if something were to happen that we weren't, I'm attorney, Geller. I am concerned about, and also because our city has had so much bad luck with long-term contracts with.
May I, Ed? Because you said that was my concern. I just want to be very clear. The concern was Commissioner Turnoff's concern. That's number one, because I, that's number one. I wanted to speak to that concern because.
Sorry, it was Commissioner Turnoff.
Right, we're negotiating a new, a new contract, and I just thought that those particular recitals can just be transferred over to make sure that the protections are there.
I think from Commissioner Smucker's standpoint is what mechanisms can we have to not be so locked in? And to clarify, City Attorney, what?
Yeah, because we just haven't had luck. Yeah, because we just haven't had luck in our city with-
Those recitals will be transferred, those are the same ones.
Yeah, 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 but I think she just wants to hear what are our options based on-
Well, the answer is that, you know, we do have a right to be able to terminate the agreement for cause or for convenience.
Yeah.
We have a right to get out of it, but what we don't have is a right to ask them to not charge us upfront for whatever costs they're going to incorporate. They get, they get cost and they get profit. I mean, that's, that's the components of what they're charging. And if it's cost and they're laying the money out, typically, they would want that to be paid on the spot, because there's a cost and a finance charge and et cetera that goes with that. But the fact that the company is willing to amortize that, which by the way, probably does include a finance charge, because somebody's got to pay it, and as they say in Latin, there ain't no such thing as a free lunch. But the point is that if we're asking them to not charge that upfront, and to do us the courtesy of putting the charge and the finance charge, which they're responsible for obtaining, over time, while we can get out of the contract and no longer continue to operate the service, basically on, you know, 30, 60, 90 days' notice, whatever we negotiate, we can't, by doing so, fail to pay what would have been an upfront cost that they amortized. So if, if the total cost of the contract is $100, and $60 of it is for upfront equipment costs, and the other is for, you know, personnel and profit, and we terminate the contract, if it's a year's contract, and we terminate it six months in, we've presumably paid off half that 60 bucks that was the equipment and finance charge. But when we terminate and say, we don't want it for the other six months, we got to pay the other 30 bucks that's owed for the, what were upfront equipment costs.
I got it.
So we have flexibility on whether to maintain it and to pay for the other portions of it, but we do have to pay off if we terminate early.
And then the other question I wanted to ask, and it's the last one, and this is, I think, what had happened originally with the water plant, that it was originally CHM2M and became Jacobs, so, and that might have actually been part of the beginning of the problems. So I just want to make sure that, that maybe if, and I'm not an attorney, so I don't know the legal words, if it's even allowed, but if there's like, let's say he were to sell, that it would have to be like a mutually agreed upon continuation of a contract by both parties.
I mean, I'm not sure I understand the question.
He understood me.
Let's say, there'll be an assumption, basically, of all the contractual obligations, is there an assumption?
By both parties.
Typically, in the event, in the event the vendor sells to someone else?
Yeah. That the continuation of the contract has to be mutually agreed by both parties.
In some con, well, we can't stop him from selling his business.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying that it's mutually-
We may have the right, we can, I mean, this is what lawyers do. This is why it's not just automatic, because we might say that we will only agree to their assignment of their contract to another party, because of a sale or takeover, a stock transfer, there's a lot of ways it can happen. We might only agree to it if we approve of who they're selling it to, that we have the right not to agree if they're selling it to a bus company.
Not to continue the contract.
Yes, but they'll push back on that, because they want to be able to sell it to who they want.
Well, of course, they want to sell it because they have our contract, but I also, and look, I think these are wonderful people.
We might end up with a clause that says that for the contract to continue, we have to approve who they're selling it to, but our approval cannot be, thank you, unreasonably withheld.
Okay.
And that means if they come forward with somebody that we have legitimate reason to think can't do the contract because of the three bankruptcies they just did where left people high and dry, that's one thing. But if we say, nah, I don't like the way the guy wears his hat, they have a right to say, yeah, that's not reasonable. And if we don't agree on what is and isn't reasonable, we are all blessed to live in this great country where people get paid to wear black robes and make independent judgments about whether we're being unreasonable or they're being unreasonable. It goes to court and it judges.
I got it. Look, we really do have a good relationship with Procel, and Procel, I think, has a good relationship with North Miami Beach. I know that you've done concessions for us, and I appreciate it, and I just want to make sure that we're covered in case one day you decide you want to retire and enjoy life, right? Maybe you'll take a page from Mario's book and-
Oh.
I'm leaving.
Commissioner, I'm in agreement with the City Attorney, and, you know, for the public record, if you want to put that in the contract, I'm agreeing it to, I'm agreeing it right now.
Okay.
So, just to put you at ease.
Ask and you show.
So can we call the question?
No, no, there's more discussion still.
Okay.
Future Vice Mayor.
The other question I have is, the two routes that you're eliminating that had low ridership, what happens to those people that were riding it? How do we accommodate them?
Can I say something before you mention that through the chair? Mister, I was about to call you Senator. But I had a chance to ride the E route a few days ago, and it's, to be clear, it's not an underutilized route. I went on it, I spoke to residents that were on it, some were getting groceries, some were, you know, running errands, so it's not underutilized. So to your point, and I know there's some concession that are going to be made, but there are real people riding that trolley. And Mr. Manager, I don't know if you had staff ride that particular day, what was any feedback from that?
Again, the route is definitely used. I think all of our routes are used. The proposal that, in working with the, with the vendor, is being able to supplement that route, because there is a lot of overlaps throughout our route. So we've optimized that. So we're still going to be servicing those residents. It might not be with a particular route for Route E, but we are still servicing, the idea is still to service those areas while reducing the amount of time between the stops or doing a full route, which will then make it easier for people to get along, because they don't have to wait an hour, an hour and a half for this trolley to come, to then meet this other trolley over there. It's trying to find ways to make everything kind of work a little bit better together.
I want, I want to let the, can I speak? I want to let the Commission know, our lot in North Miami Beach has expanded, and we have a lot of vehicles there. At any time during this contract, and the City Attorney could put it that way, whatever modifications the city might want to do to the way that the contract, the way that the routes are, we're open to modify that. So I, and I think that as we continue to do the outreach, we'll be monitoring the routes, we'll be working with Carleen and city staff to look at the ridership number continuously. I think that if the city were to move forward tonight and approve going for the five years, this gives us the opportunity to now go purchase those vehicles. And as the, as we operate the service, it could be month one, month two, month three, we'll be communicating with the city on the ridership trends and things of that nature, and we're all, we could, we would be able, if needed, to get one of the small, one of these on-demand vehicles, and if you want to put a trolley back on a route, we're open to that. It's the way we structured it, it's not to go above what's budgeted. So we understand what's the city's budget, we worked to optimize it, reduce the cost, and taking one of these vehicles out and putting it somewhere else, if that's what the Commission wants to do, we have the flexibility to do that without going over whatever your yearly budget is. So I just want the Commission to understand that.
Yeah, he didn't answer my question, okay. In regards to the eastern shores that we're going to eliminate because of ridership, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, there was some ridership, right?
Yes.
So what are we saying, how they're going to ride, where they're going to ride, how they're going to get serviced?
They would be able to ride Route 75, which is a Miami-Dade County route that already goes through there, like our-
So it's a duplication of services that we're eliminating and buying?
Correct.
They'll still pay for the 75, but they will pay for the-
No, no, I'm not, I'm not-
They'll still be serviced.
Okay, so there's a charge.
There's a cost, but for the takeaway, because, like you said, sorry.
Commissioner Turnoff. I think I had, and this is why I have an issue about cutting services, and this is weird. This has always been strange to me that every time somebody wants to help you, especially in this type of, especially when it comes to this trolley, they want to hurt you. Like I don't, I never understood when people want to help you, their argument in regards to this, I want to hurt you. And this is what, we're hurting, we're going to hurt a couple of people that do utilize that service, that count on that service, because for some reason, it made logical sense that to help that community, you got to take away something. And that didn't make any sense to me. I don't think we should be cutting any type of route service. That's me personally, but, you know, that's just my thought. But I just want you to understand that, like, and every time there's a cut, it's always on the back of people that have the least amount of power.
Yeah, no, my concern was that we were leaving them high and dry, and we weren't doing anything for them, but if we-
They're going to have to pay for 75?
And remember-
Although they can get a golden pass and ride for free.
But not everybody's like eligible person for that. Like, there are people that take the brunt of it.
And remember that we, this year, through the FDOT grant, we've expanded our fleet for on-demand freebie service as well. We went from five vehicles to 10 to help improve those timeframes. So that's not a service that we're affecting at all. So that's still available to them as well.
Thank you.
My ask, real quick, is that, like I asked for, if somebody from your staff can ride the trolley for a specific amount of time, that's going to be my ask for Route A and E, that, you know, we make sure that whoever rides it has fair notice and whatever outreach can be done. So if the, if the motion, the maker of the motion can make sure that's in it.
I like that.
Yeah.
Give notice.
How much, how, when does it take effect anyways?
So if the city was to make a motion today, this would take, we would start, we would, you know, go out, start purchasing vehicles, and then we'll start doing the outreach, it'll be about 90 days to do the outreach.
So 90 days to eliminate the routes in eastern shores?
And Aventura.
And Aventura.
Correct. And we would, and if the city wanted to wait some more time, we can. It depends on whatever the city wants to do, but we would at least need 90 days to go and start having the vehicles come in.
90 days is a lot of notice.
That it is, but Vice Mayor has been waiting, so I heard that.
Mr. Mayor, all right, so let me clarify, you were talking about the advertising funds or profits is about 15,000, 30,000 for, like, without the sharing? Is that like net income?
That's the net, that's the net.
Per year or per month?
Per year.
Per year, okay. And that is for how many vehicles?
This is for all of the vehicles. This is what, on the lower-
But I'm assuming that some of your other cities may have more.
Yeah, this is for, this is going to be for five vehicles.
Five vehicles, so we would have a little less than that, roughly.
Than $30,000?
Because we have four vehicles?
No, for all of the, all of the vehicles for the service.
No, what I mean is like that estimate that you got from the other income, is that from five vehicles? Okay, got it, thank you. All right, the other one is, what is the, okay, so when, you know, I know we're doing this whole depreciation thing with the, with the contract, but one thing that I didn't notice that has been separated is the vehicle price that is going to depreciate and the service, like the two numbers are still conflated together? Did I miss something? Okay, so that will be separated, and then, and then we can then have a negotiation as to like what it is that we want? All right. The, so as far as the, oh, when is the timeline for the on-demand vehicles? Like, how soon can you get those in?
As soon as, if the Commission were to approve today, we get the vehicles within 60 days.
Wow, that long?
Yes.
Okay. No, just checking. Just checking.
Yes.
No, the reason, the reason being is, is going to be because we have two items for
your company today. So this is actually a reference for the next conversation.
We're financially in a position to get the vehicles. It's not that the vehicles won't be the delay, it'll be the technology putting everything in place.
Right.
And have the right onboarding for it, testing it, so that would be it.
Okay, so I see, thank you.
All right.
I just have one question.
Come back to me, let her, because I was thinking about my question.
Oh, okay. So you, when you did the study, what did it include? Like, it included, did it include like riders, numbers of ridership?
Yes.
So did you provide that numbers? It's in a, it's online. So if anybody wants to see the numbers of ridership-
Yes.
Wait, okay. If anybody wants to see the numbers of ridership, they can find it online.
Yes.
And then they don't have to text me and say that you didn't even do that, okay, that it doesn't exist. Okay, cool, thank you.
Oh, this is about the study as well, the collection, like, how did you, how did you come to that conclusion of this routing between all the different stops that you decided to do and shorten the routes, and, you know, which direction to go?
We hired, we hired a consulting firm to take the lead in the, in the study, and then we used the historical numbers. We did some sampling, where we would have staff go on the bus on certain days and do some sampling, and we looked at all of the numbers, and we were able to see which were the lowest performing stops. Some of these stops, some stops is just, like, one route is just eliminating two stops, one route is eliminating four, four stops. So that's what we did to be able to optimize the service. I know that was something big that the city has always wanted to do, is to optimize it and make it more efficient.
Right, I mean, my, I think I get a lot of complaints about timing, like being on time.
Well, let me say on timing, if I might, Vice Mayor, that procurement points out to me, the item tonight, besides going forward with the long-term plan, is to extend the existing agreement for nine to 10 days. It is possible that, you know, depend, lawyers are not known for speed, so it is possible that it will take us a little longer to finalize the agreement, and they still have, no matter what, I mean, they'd probably, they'd practically have to order those vehicles tonight, which wouldn't be prudent until we actually have a negotiated agreement, yeah, signed contract. So, you know, you might see at some point that there could be another 30 or 60-day extension in your future. The reason that the manager has selected 90 is to try to keep the pressure on to get this done and move to the new program as quickly as possible, but there's just no guarantee that that's going to happen, because there is a lead time for them to get the vehicles. that that's gonna happen, because there is a lead time for them to get the vehicles. And, and, and it's not one, it's five vehicles. You want to have a signed contract in your hand before you order from them.
All right, so, I appreciate it. So, yeah, let's go ahead and move this thing forward. Um, the motion is clear. Um, it is to, you, you're very clear on the motion, right? That's what, that's what we've always been talking about. Yeah.
Oh, sorry. All right. Um, I, I, I have a, I'm, I'm a little hesitant about, about the five routes. I'm thinking of four. No, no, it's not. So, currently, we have A through E already, right? Do we have D1 and D2 still?
Correct.
Okay, so we have D1, D2, so that means that we have six routes altogether. Okay, so, um, from my looking at the current routes that are there right now, I think like E has a bus that subsidizes for it, and then so does A, right? So, when we're looking at these routes, then I'm thinking, okay, so if A and E are out, four is left. And instead, like, we now have five. So, uh-
B1 will be eliminated, uh, or B2.
D2 is eliminated, right? Okay.
One of the buses on the route.
Yeah, one bus, not the route.
Correct, okay. Oh, one bus, one, same bus used twice in two different-
Yeah, there's two buses on, on the Ulieta route.
Okay. Can you re- repeat that for the record, please?
Yes, ma'am. So, so Route A and E would be eliminated. Uh, Route D has actually two buses. We would take one bus out, so we wouldn't eliminate the route, and then we would supplement it with the other two vehicles for, for the supplemental, uh, on-demand service.
Okay.
So, basically, it's gonna be three routes plus the two supplemental for a total of five.
All right, thank you. Um, and so, the motion, for the motion to be very clear, uh, Mr. Attorney, um, we understand that your duty is to go and negotiate along with the city manager and staff, um, in agreement with ProCal for five years.
Yes, sir.
Um, and if there is not an impasse, that is the negotiated contract.
The manager has stated that he would want to bring the final contract back to you for approval.
Well, I'm just repeating the motion that I wanted to make very clear what it was.
That's your privilege.
Right, right. And you, and you clarified what that would look like. So, you know, if there's no issues, then we're good to go.
Yes.
Um, for the five years, right?
Yes, sir.
Hey, hey, and one more, please. I'm sorry. One, one more.
I was gonna add, I was gonna add-
Well, there will be, we-
Thank you.
If, to the extent, to answer the question, excuse me, Mayor, but the question is asked like, to the extent that any of you, i- i- if you are voting that you don't necessarily want to see the final, to the extent that any of you have specific concerns such as Commissioner Smucker just raised, and I've already had this conversation with Purchasing, um, and we've, I've talked to the Purchasing Director, and I've discussed it. But if you have particular thoughts, I can't promise that they'll get in there, but please direct them to our office, to the CAO, and we'll at least raise them and see if we can negotiate your points in, or try to get back to you and let you know why that can't be done.
Final thoughts. Okay, um, currently, I think what we, your total number for each year is about 1.9 million, correct?
For the, for the-
For the five, all, all these routes, the new cars-
For the current, for the current contract? For the current contract?
Mm-hmm. Uh, in the microphone, please.
The current contract is at 1.9.
Yes.
What we're proposing is 1.8, and with the reduction of a hundred thousand and for the operating cost. And then obviously, we, we separated the, the cost of the vehicles because you, you're not incurring those costs right now.
Correct, yeah. I mean, we will be, be paying the depreciated value if we do cancel. Okay, and then we have, um, so, so I'm thinking one, a hundred and eighty, and then, of course, like, we get advert advertisements for that, which is thirty, you know, so, and then, like, your, your on-demand vehicles can also get ads. Um, I'm, I'm wondering if we can look at something around in the one and a half million portion?
Right, and, and the reality is, after a long, after a study, after all of these minds in transportation have, have, have come to the table, um, you know, there's, that's a significant difference, huge difference, between 1.822 and 1.5. To be, to have that discussion on a dais, I, I don't, I just, I, I don't understand. But, um, yeah, so, the motion is clear, and also, the ninety days leading to, um, this, uh, change, um, we wanted to make sure that we hear Commissioner Jean's point about, um, riding the, uh, trolleys and telling people what's going on and making sure they're informed of the changes. So, that's my motion, and it was already seconded.
It's a voice vote, Mayor.
Aye.
Nay. Yes. I think it's the extension, right?
Eleven point four?
Yeah, we went out of order.
Wait, so, did we extend the, the three months? So, what's happening in the next three months? Because the contract is already in. I'm sorry, wait, hold on. Okay, so, Mr. Attorney, um, don't we have to do an extension for three months?
No, we-
So, by voting for the five-year, we are automatically go into the five, three- I read it, I thought there were two different resolutions.
Three months to negotiate, so.
Four.
Manager, was that included in the item? The ninety-day extension was part of it, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that was, that was subsumed in the item. It was the way it was written.
So moved.
Yes, so this item is for, uh, budgeted, uh, material and equipment for water plant, for pneumatic, uh, valves and control equipment that are tied more towards our nano, or, or an portion of our lime softening, uh, system, including valves and automatic, uh, you-know system that we need. Uh, it's sole source procurement already advertised it through the guideline, and we're asking for, well, for that.
Bring it before the commission. Do I have any discussion on this item? Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item.
I have a quick question, Mr.-
Okay, board of personal approvals.
We already approved the, I wanted to know, do you have a total of what we spent on, on such items?
Uh, we are trying to start thinking about implementing renewal replacement program within our budget, so we can have better tracking. But at least at this point, yes, it through our general leisure and munis, we can track of our expenditure on those items.
Next item. Madam Clerk?
Um, because I know we have some pull this, like, nine point two, or what is it?
We moved some items.
No, that's a, it's a, no, it was on-
Those approved.
That was in consent.
It was a consent. Nine, nine point five, nine point, uh, can we go to nine point five? No, we didn't.
No, we didn't. It was more-
It was pull, no, no, that was in the trolley. Nine point five, yes. Um, move to, do I have a motion to move to introduce?
Motion.
Have a second.
Second, second, okay. The city, um, attorney?
Yes, sir.
One point four.
Okay. Resolution, item nine point five, resolution number R-2025-43, establishing a policy for expansion of NMB water service areas, resolution of the mayor and city commi- sponsored by Mayor Joseph. A resolution of the mayor and city commission in the city of North Miami Beach, Florida, declaring it to be the policy of the city to establish and maintain NMB water as a regional provider of water and sewer services, expressing the city's intent to consider requests for sewer, uh, service area expansions from public or private utilities, authorizing the city manager to receive such requests, providing for an advisory recommendation process through the Public Utilities Commission, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date. Okay, thank you. So, this item, and I spoke with the manager about this, I, I'm gonna, I want to speed it up. Um, so, this item is just pretty much laying, um, laying out that we, we're, we're looking to expand. Um, I've had discussions with the city of North Miami, um, and possibly expanding that, um, down, down south. And they have an inclination of really, you know, uh, coming into discussions where we can expand our, our, our water utility down there, um, to our sister city, um, which would be a kind of like a win-win situation. We've, um, been working on this since, uh, at least January. And, um, and, um, I'm, and basically, I just want, this is just a policy, just setting out the direction, and hopefully I can get you guys to support it. And, uh, and Mr. Manager, if you have any additional thoughts? Because you were at the same meeting as well, and they seemed pretty inclined to-
Yeah, they, they were definitely interested in looking how we can partner, um, as we start looking at PFAS mitigation, as well as any potential sewer treatment. Uh, Mayor, at the meeting, you had mentioned to North Miami, um, that both North Miami and North Miami Beach pay, uh, multiple millions of dollars for sewer treatment.
Yep, to, to-
And that there was an opportunity for both of us to do it.
Like, half, like, no, close to five million dollars per month, give or take, right? Um, Director, how much should we pay them per month for the wastewater?
Uh, per, for the wastewater to Wozzie?
Yeah.
Over five million a year.
Because we don't have a wastewater, wastewater department.
And so, what, what this does is it sets a policy in which staff will pers- per, provide for, um, a procedure following one that's already similarly established for the county, in which how we evaluate any type of requests for expansion of service.
So, that is the resolution. Do I, I have a motion? So, I'm, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a quick question for Mr. Mayor. I think it's a great initiative. And in light of good faith, I know Vice Mayor Sue was also in the same vein as you, so just opening it up for any cosponsorship opportunities here.
Hey, I'll just do it with the entire commission. We'll do it with the entire commission. Let, so, I'll sponsor, let's, it'll be mayor and commission. Mayor and commission. All right, all in favor, say aye.
That's a great one.
Passage unanimously.
Look at that.
Next item, nine point fi- nine point-
Six. Move to introduce.
Second.
All right, um, Mr. City, well, Mr. Manager.
Sure. Um, in, in also consideration for not only the transfer of, but also the assumption of service, um, with Miami-Dade County, um, this item allows staff to investigate and to look and to negotiate. Any type of, um, final, um, decision would have to come back to the commission for consideration and what that looks like. It also sets for parameters in which, uh, needs to protect our system.
Wait, wait, before, no, no, city, um, Commissioner Smucker.
No, I mean, I, I, actually, what I was gonna say that, I'm not even sure if this is something we should be doing now, or if we should wait until the bill passes or doesn't pass.
See, the, and this is the reason I'm bringing this up now, so I can clarify, right? There has been stances in regards to how they've been, like, how, and, and I have to be very careful on this item.
And how they treat people?
Yes, and how they treat people. Um, and we have to get ourselves well-positioned, because depending on, if we don't do this, if we don't set ourselves in a, in a particular route, because this thing, the way that's moving, it's July first. So, this is positioning us to give us enough time to do what needs to be done, to, to have the discussions with, with the county, if it does, if this does happen, and gives us the options. Not to say that we're giving, we're not giving up on Miami Gardens, just to be clear, right? There has to be some type of negotiations, if, if, if we do go down that route, that, um, that we're just setting out the param- parameters about. That's all we're doing, just setting the parameters.
I have a question as well.
She did?
Yeah.
So, my question is from, um, the standpoint of, of the accounts, and also just the standpoint of approval, right? So, let's say you start having the discussions, you understand the feasibility, what does the approval process look like? So, does, is this something that comes back to the commission for further? And the reason I'm saying this is because in the discussion, I'm sure there's things that all of us want to have questions about. So, will, will this be your team solely having those discussions? Will we be invited to those discussions? Because I think it's important for us to also have our voice and some of the, the points that you'll be making during these discussions. And for the sake of, um, you know, sunshine and so forth, you know, what would be a good avenue for us to be also privy to those discussions?
I want to add to that, um, to be clear. Um, there's a mechanism based on how, as a utility, we can, it's, it's like we're as of right to do certain things. As of right. So, if you want to have this, if you want to be in meetings with the county or whatever, that's one thing. And that's what this, all it is, because we, we have it as of right. It's not like we need permission from any of our customers to do this.
Right.
Because if, let's say, because the thing is, it has to be a cost benefit. Like, if it makes sense that, uh, if it makes sense that we, we sell wholesale, whatever, and we do this process, then it makes more sense to us, because the, the alternative would be increasing the rates and subsidizing of-
Well, not to get in the weeds.
No, I don't, I don't want to get too much in the weeds.
It's just, right, exactly. But it's more, it's more so, not in the weeds of the technicalities, right? But it's more so our ability to be in the room when those discussions are being had.
Of course, that would-
That's the part that I'm trying to ensure that we're all able to come to the table.
Specific with the customer, I just want to make that clear.
Right, right. I get, I got you.
So, the, the county has a, a process and a procedure for, for these type of, um, request. Uh, the last one they did was, I think, almost twenty years ago, when Miami Springs, um, gave up their, their utility to, to the county. Um, and so, the process is all, you give me GIS data, give me, um, um, X data that you have, we do an inspection, and then there's an evalu- there's a financial analysis. So, it's, it's really technical. There's not, uh, necessarily meetings of, oh, we like this or whatnot.
I totally get that. My point is, those discussions, we would all love to be privy to either being in the room, whether it's technical. That's, the, the whole point is not the technicality of it. It's, are we allowed, or we will be, we, will we be privy to being able to be in those rooms when those conversations are had, be it, be it technical? That, that's really the question. Yes.
Um, to the, to the Commissioner's point, I think, um, you know, the resolution talks about initiating transfer discussions. Now, I just want to make sure, because based on what I'm reading, it's saying this is just to allow the discussions to, to happen. Now, as far as, as far as, as far as information-
I get that, I get that already.
As far as information, I agree with you, Commissioner.
Yes.
That we should be privy to those details. And, um, it's my assumption now, but I would like for staff to further clarify, what is my assumption, that those details are gonna be brought back for discussion by the commission. So, the, I'm just, I'm just piggybacking-
That was not the ask. I think we're, you're going around the question that I'm asking, right?
Well, what I'm saying is the valuation of things, for instance. What are they discussing? I mean, I'm not trying to-
Because there were other discussions had about water issues that all of us were not privy to. And it's, we were told details, but we were not necessarily invited to the table, right? So-
No, I'm not disagreeing with you. I, I just, here it says here, the subject, like, let's talk about valuation, compensation of infrastructure assets, reciprocal transfer of service accounts, retention of water production facilities. If, are, are those the, to the maker of the, of the resolution?
Right.
Are those the specific, uh, uh, items that will be discussed in these?
It's, it'll be, it'll be tied to the ordinance itself. That's it. We're just-
So, those are the only items that will be discussed, right? The items that are listed here.
And, and, and I know, we're, we're, and the ask is, when you are initiating these conversations and actually having them, that all of us are privy to attending.
And briefed of-
Not only briefed, but able to attend.
With the county.
There's a big difference.
Yeah. I have, I've seen no issues with that at all. I think that's-
I know you only have sixty days left, Mr. Manager.
No, well, this, this process is not a sixty-day process.
Right, exactly.
Um, but, but it's a start. Um, I, I will, I will tell you from, from a staff perspective, um, Commissioner, um, yes, um, you can always come to the meeting. I don't think you're gonna get anything out of the meeting, uh, because staff will always recognize, um, just like if an attorney comes, then the other party's attorney has to be there, right? And so, if that comes in, then it's going to be, okay, well, then the district commissioner will be invited. You guys will have your say, but then staff is gonna have to meet with staff, because this is just on the, on the technical way.
It's nuanced, that one.
Right.
Evaluation of assets and all these types of things.
That is, that is strictly the data and the numbers, and give me the GIS and this data, and give me that. It's not like we're, we're sitting across the table and negotiating the tone point.
But I, but I see where-
But we can definitely make it, um, so that you can be part of it, but then that meeting completely changed.
So, so you got the- So, so you got the, you've, you've got the.
Okay.
We've got the.
Oh, Vice Mayor's next.
Yeah, she has a.
Thank you, sir. All right, so, um, I, before we have this conversation, actually, it could happen concurrently. What I think is we should do a rate study. Like, anything to preempt, anything that is going to be transferred, whether Miami Gardens is going to, you know, kick up a fuss and decide that they want to leave us and go to Miami-Dade County, like, all of that is irrelevant if we do a rate study. And then we're clear on that, then we can, you know, at the same time, negotiate this thing. But what I'm not seeing is, I'm not seeing a rate study, so I know that we passed a rate study.
Yeah, we did pass a rate study.
A year ago.
Yes, ma'am. As, as upgraded, as, as updated, uh, we do have a rate study. Um, staff from before had not started it when they should have. And we currently have our, our new directors, um, taking up the, the mantle on that to move us and get us up to date. So there is a rate study going on. We are working with a consultant and we're hoping to bring all that back by September.
Yeah.
By September?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner.
Six months? Well.
That, that is the project timeline as of right now. There could be delays depending on the data or whatnot. But as we see that, right now, the update is to bring it back in September.
It's not, it's not even that.
Okay. No, we're not going anywhere, but that legislation might be active July 1st of 2025.
No.
Oh, he's not going anywhere.
Who's not going anywhere?
We're telling him.
No, because Commissioner, because Commissioner, turn off and then we'll close it up.
Wait, hold on. So, um, apart from the rate study, now with this said, um, I'm, I'm saying that we have 12,789 accounts in Miami Gardens. My request is that, um, when, if there's any kind of negotiation, what?
Try not to make it personal.
Please, like, please.
Okay, I have to be broad. Got it. Okay, so, so any exchanges, like, I, I don't want to sell off things.
We're not selling, okay.
Okay.
That, Commissioner, turn off.
All I'm saying is, I'm, I'm in favor of this, but don't look just south, look east.
Northwest, yes, that's all encompassing.
Yep.
And final thought, Commissioner Florham.
Yes, on this issue, um, uh, in, in with respect to what Commissioner Jean was saying, um, you know, my, my comments were sent, were mainly, uh, about what the resolution is stating, right? Um, but there is a valid concern that she has, right? And that is, we don't want to repeat the mistakes of the past. If I'm assuming that that's where she was going, is that we need to really be well-versed on what it is that if we get to the point that we're going to give something, uh, we need to know if the valuations are correct.
Of course.
And the premise of the arguments.
This is our nest egg. That's what staff, that's what staff, yeah.
Well, well, but, but here's the.
Oh, no, 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 wait, let me be clear, let me be clear with this item. I took a, look, there was, there were, there were people coming up here saying we're selling it off.
Right.
They, and they were just trying to make it, um, doing it a roundabout way that was doing what a couple of these people were a part of back in 2016. And, and that was severely offensive to me. Certain people that were like, rah rah, this, boom bah, this is the best thing since sliced bread. And I had to take it. This is not what this is. We got to make sure that, that we're getting the best bang for a buck. We're not selling off anything. We're not. We have an issue with a very aggressive customer base.
Location out there that could hurt us.
Yes.
So let's move forward.
Let's move forward.
So this is, this is, right, this is to address, to address that. And we just want to make sure that it's addressed the proper way. So I just wanted to make that comment towards, um, Commissioner Jean. I understand you. I understand where you're coming from. So, um, aside from that, I'm ready to.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Oh, passes unanimously. Next item. Six, six oh. Next item. What is nine point seven?
Pardon?
Oh.
Nine point seven. Resolution, item nine point seven, resolution number R 2025 dash forty-five, reinstating sergeant-at-arms program sponsored by the chief of police. Uh, resolution, the mayor and city commissioner, city of North Miami Beach, order repealing resolution number R 2023 dash twenty, which terminated the police department sergeant-at-arms detail policy, reinstating sergeant-at-arms program, directing city manager and implement program providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Good evening again. Uh, last commission meeting, I was given direction to create a sergeant-at-arms policy, uh, which we did. Uh, the policy outlines restrictions, scope of duty, special assignments, and also create a proposed budget on what the sergeant-at-arms would look like as far as, uh, as cost goes. Um, I believe you have that information with you. Uh, as far as the cost goes, I gave you a cost that is, uh, it was more of a, an, an estimate of what it would look like. So it's not a real number. Um, and again, I just wanted to make it clear that as public servants and law enforcement officials, uh, our job is to protect and serve. Um, and if there is an issue or a threat of any kind, we will address it accordingly. I'll take any questions that you have.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
In comparison to the previous, um, policy, what's the contrast? Is there, if any?
So, yeah, so this, this policy outlines, uh, restrictions and, um, also gives us the opportunity to become available upon request. So, uh, now it's a 72 hours, we'd have to be notified 72 hours in advance if a request, a request were to come in from a mayor or a commission requesting services. Uh, it's also outlined what we will not do in, in our capacity as sergeant-at-arms. I can list those for you if you'd like.
Please do.
Yeah, so there's four main ones, uh, which is perform personal errands for mayor commission, provide transportation for events that are personal in nature, transport family members of elected officials unless in an official capacity, and engage in duties outside the scope of official city business.
I have another question. Thank you for that. So in, in, in this, in the, um, in this, in the instance that there is an incident affecting a commissioner or two or more, right? What triggers additional security? So would the sergeant-at-arms cover that or would the natural nature of what you guys do cover that?
So every threat, uh, is specific, case specific. Uh, the venue that would be traveling to, the environment, uh, again, any potential threats that we could encounter would then require a response from us on the level of, of officers that we were assigned to that, to that particular commissioner at the time. So it's, it's a broad answer because it just, it depends on a lot of factors.
Commissioner, turn off.
When I was elected, we got rid of the program. The reason we got rid of the program was because of how badly it was abused in the past. And I think we're going down a slippery task, if we, slippery road, whatever, to put this thing back in motion. If we all remember during this tenure of all of us, there was an incident with Israel and events we were going to that we had police protection without a sergeant-at-arms program, that they had to cover us because there was a threat to us. So our police department would step in at that point and whatever the cost is, will have to be, you know, dealt with. But we don't need a sergeant-at-arms to give people ammunition to say how bad we are or how stupid we are for reinstating it when it was so abused last time. I think we're going down the wrong road.
So, so, okay, go.
To, to Commissioner, uh, Shunoff's point, it goes back to my question kind of, right? So is there a mechanism to request it outside of the policy?
So, uh, to Commissioner Charles' point, that was a specific event with potential threats. Uh, at that point, it is outlined in our policy that we will initiate our special response team, who is trained specifically for dignitary protection and large groups to move back and forth to a venue. But on the normal scope of a sergeant-at-arms, that would be a different, um, you know, a detail, which is also outlined here.
So. Can I speak on my, because, you know what, Vice Mayor, go ahead. No, 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 go ahead.
Okay, um, how many officers do you have?
Ninety-eight.
How many do you need? I mean, what is the allotted number?
We're budgeted for a hundred and seven.
A hundred and seven, you have ninety-eight.
Plus the cops grant, correct.
Now, if we have sergeant-at-arms, how many other, like, so, I mean, do we, do they need, do we need to hire new people or, I mean, how does that?
So currently we have within our, in it, within our budget, within our officers that we have currently, we have ten, I believe it's ten officers that are certified that can do the sergeant-at-arms detail, correct.
Okay, so we would have to take away from the ninety's?
Well, they would be used on an overtime basis. So we explored the options of having a part-time, um, the union, you know, so.
Yes, understood. Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Florham.
Couple of questions. Um, you know, uh, Chief, I can't help but, um, I'm thinking about your canine pictures, your pictures with, uh, and you, you, you look like a real crime-fighting machine in those pictures. You posted them this past week, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was a throwback.
You should see these pictures. Yeah, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Um, you know, but, uh, we appreciate your guys' service. I think that's really what's, 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 what's key here is that people are trying to make sure there's a balance between, um, um, what you're supposed to be doing for the entire community and what you do for the commission. Um, you know, and I think that makes sense, right? But at the same time, we need to be mindful that that's, it's part of public service. It's part of their public service, right? It's to make sure that everyone is okay, including the members of, of this commission. Um, and I think that, you know, in reading the policy, it addresses a lot of the concerns that Commissioner Turnoff and our community residents, um, had and, uh, about the previous program,
Correct.
uh, which were very valid concerns. And if I'm correct, you make the final decision on any request?
I would.
Yes.
For my designee.
All right, so as, in previous, um, the previous program, it was basically a little bit more, um, more lax and it was, uh, requests made, requests approved, is that what was basically?
I, I, I couldn't speak to it.
Because you weren't responding, you weren't making, okay, at that time you weren't responsible for it. But that's one of the things that I read. You are the decision-maker based on the policies. And also there's something called a random basis. If you can tell me what that means, random basis, um, and, uh, one point three, one point three, point one, point three, under scheduling and assignments. Sergeant-at-arms, sergeant-at-arms will not be assigned to specific elected officials. Assignments will be made based on scheduled events and on a rotating or random basis. I want to know what random basis is.
So random basis is something like, uh, to Commissioner Charles' point, uh, an event where it's politically charged or there's been threats or heightened alertness, uh, that's when we would initiate our special response team.
Okay. Um, and then prior to this particular policy, you really didn't have one that said that you would, you would have any, uh, police presence at these types of events, correct? Would that be correct?
So it's covered in our special response team policy. Uh, there's a section there for dignitary protection.
Okay.
So, yeah, but not a particular policy for sergeant-at-arms like we do now.
Got it, okay. And, um, when you say blanket requests for service are not permitted, can you tell me what that means?
So it's basically something that doesn't fall within the policy, something that is, um, not covered in our do's and don'ts with the policy. So it just can't be, you know, uh, a random, uh, request for, uh, not within the timeframes that we're looking for. It has, everything has to be adhered to specifically to the policy for us to honor it.
Okay, and that's what, what was the timeframe, seventy?
Seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours.
All right, so about three days, basically.
Correct.
Okay.
It gives us time to pre-plan, to scope out where we're going, to make sure that we have sufficient personnel.
And can you answer the question as far as the concern a, about taking police off the streets for this particular program? Um, how do you mitigate that?
So this program would work on, basically on a rotational basis. Uh, we have a approximately ten officers that would be on call for each month. If a request were to come in, those officers know that they're on call for that month and they know they have to be ready to respond. So they wouldn't, essentially they would not be, if they were on duty for that specific event that's requested upon, it would go to the next officer who's off duty.
Okay, so, but there, most likely would always be an off-duty officer, right?
Correct. It would have to be an off-duty officer. I can't pull manpower from patrol to.
Okay, so, so that's.
That's why, that's why it comes into seventy-two hours.
Right, so that's the answer, right? The answer is you're not pulling police officers from their, uh, duties to participate in this program. You're going for off-duty officers, right? Who are making themselves available for off-duty hours similar to any other, uh, pro, uh, uh, business that might need assistance. They would go to off-duty officers.
Yes, the only difference with that is the pay, the rate of pay. Off-duty has a set, uh, pay through the collective bargaining agreement and this would be overtime.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
Okay, so I brought this, I brought this up last time because, you know, I've had certain issues, certain concerns regarding events I've attended, events I've attended where, you know, I, I didn't particularly feel safe. Um, I've gotten, hmm, because I, I need to make some type of correlation to like certain things happen. It, it, because, um, a couple of months, uh, a couple of months ago, there was an incident, uh, where, um, uh, I was at a, uh, I, I was at an event that, that was, that became particularly charged from what, I guess, from situations that happened a couple of years ago that they feel that were not done to their liking and still remain charged to this day. I was by myself, um, and this was like, uh, an event where there were other elected officials, but they, I was kind of cornered off. Um, I don't know if you guys remember, but two, two years ago, like, not too long, there was, we, we were in a very bad place. Very bad place and how we were in discourse. There's a lot of people that are still charged in that capacity that have, um, communicated in various ways. I'm, I'm being very mindful because, you know, I, you know, and not to dismay anything to my, to, to, to the police department. But after discussing with my family and the past, like, there's, there's been a past, there's been things in the past where I've reported certain things, um, to our department that were not, not with this administration, let me be very clear. Prior administration, where it was, it was de-minimize or diminish as it just being, oh, you guys, you just don't like each other. Where someone was outside of my house, has a concealed weapon to carry with my wife and kid. And it made me very reluctant to reach out. And I did reach out, eventually reached out to the chief and, you know, we had a very in-depth discussion about this. And, um, and he understands how sensitive this is, there's reasons why when I, you know, go to certain events. And this was offered to me specifically, like, I, it would only be adhered to me, like, this was offered, like, well, Mayor, since you're in a particular, to, to, to titular role, it makes sense that there's certain protections. Even a, a person that was hearing public comments says, it makes sense that as the mayor, you, there's certain protections that it makes sense, right? Because of all the events I'm being asked to go to and whatever. But, you know, when I was thinking about the policy, it shouldn't be limited to me. You know, my life is not worth more than anyone on this dance. We still have the same responsibilities. We still go to certain things. I understand I'm in a more heightened aspect of it on the face, but I didn't want to make it specific to me. I could have, they, because based on that, like, if I have a credible threat or have an issue, then I have every right to be protected or feel protected. Like, I don't want something to happen. No, no, but there's, but this is on, this is like, I am the first for, I'm a first. And then what that first comes with is a lot of other things, a lot of other things. And some, certain people make this as, as pomp and not understanding that there are, there are, we live in a very charged society currently. Um, and this is not about pomp and circumstance, because even if you go back to the history of when this program was running, I was, I hardly utilized this. They can look at the records, I, I wasn't, but I understand in this new role and what's being required of me to make sure that we're represented and that the city's in, in the best footing to, to be, uh, to get the best, to guess, to get the best bang for a buck for my participation or whatever, I have to participate. I cannot with good conscience without, you know, I had to make this request. I had to say, hey, I'm, I'm, I don't, I talk with my wife, talk, there's a reason I don't bring my kids around here. There's a reason. I don't bring anybody I, I care for, that I'm married for. I don't bring my family around. People have asked, why doesn't a man bring his, there's a, there's a, there's, because there's been credible threats. And people have made light of this, making this seem like chauffeuring around. For me, I just want to be able to go to an event and to be like, hey, I'm here, let's get out of here, fellas. And they know that, a lot of people know that I go to events and I leave and I'm, and I'm done. That's, that's how I've always been. I don't, I don't lollygag. I do what I have to. If I have to attend, I, and I move on. But there are still people to this day that are still charged with lies, and they are lies, that still believe this and still consider me, consider, consider myself to be illegitimate to this day. And people laugh about it and joke about it, like, you're laughing right now.
No, it's, we're not laughing at it.
No, no, no. What, what do you mean? That, that being said, I just want to say that I, I asked for this request because it was, it was a sincere request. You guys know me, you guys know how I move and it's not in a, I've never moved that way. Like, I come in and I roll out. You guys know me, you guys know how I move, and it's not in a, I've never moved that way. Like, I come in and I roll out. But I feel that because of, that I need it. Now, if you guys voted down, you voted down, but I know I made the request. I made the request, and nobody can say I didn't do it, and God forbid something happens, I made the request. Cause something happens, I don't want my wife to walk around with a bench somewhere in some park saying, "Hey, no, no, no." Somebody said, "Hey, there's a, there was, there was a resident that says, "Huh, you're all good people, nothing happens to good people." You don't remember that? I remember that.
No, no, I'm just saying.
I'm like, no, nothing happens to good people. He said that, and I'm thinking, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking about leadership, like Martin Luther King. No, no, I'm just, I'm, I don't wanna get too charged about it, but it, I, it, it kinda irks me for people to make light of someone's security and safety and put a, and to put a dollar amount on it. And it's not right or fair. That's, I mean, Commissioner Flormont.
No, I, I was just going to um, to, to say that, when we look at the past program, you're correct, you barely ever, you know, um, ba- barely ever used it, and, you know, i- i- it's, 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 it's true. I'm just looking at, also at the issues that were raised in, in the previous program and how those issues have been addressed here by PD, by the police chief, the deputy police chief, and his team. People who don't want to have to run around with their, you know, like chickens with their heads cut, cut off, you know, you don't wanna be, y- you know, um, in a position where you, you can't have enough people on the roads or that you're scrambling to make sure that uh, the commission is okay. Um, you, you're not building a program to the detriment of your own police department. I, I, I don't see you doing that. And I don't see that in this policy that's in front of me, very clear what it is that they put together to, 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 to mitigate those concerns that you have and to make sure that the PD is okay. I think that was one of the biggest things is where are the police coming from? These are off-duty officers who are always off-duty. It's not like they were gonna be on duty and they decided to be off-duty so they can come and do this. It's, this is how many we have off-duty, and we're picking from that pool. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's, so, so that's, that's why I'm more comfortable supporting this.
At a cost of eighty, eighty-five dollars, not a cost of one dollar for the retired officer.
I wanted to, I wanted, to be clear, uh, if you can explain that part, because I, 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 I wanted on the retired or part-time.
Correct.
And it wa- it was kinda that way. I, I, I've even asked the chief that you, for him to report on how this is being done on a monthly basis, so you can, cause he gave an estimate of like, "Well, if I take all the events that you guys have and, and come up," if you can come up with the, the, what you came up with the number, please come up so you can, uh, so they can understand how you came up with that particular-
Basically, it was just uh, kind of a random number, but we did was, we took all seven of you and estimated if all seven of you attended three events per month, that would be twenty-one events per month, and we did the math. Um, and that's how we came up with uh, the fourteen thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars a month for twenty-one events for two officers.
So, it wasn't-
And a hundred and sixty-nine thousand uh, for the year. That's at two hundred and fifty-two events for two officers. Using the same formula of twenty-one a month.
And that's if everyone used it?
It's everyone used it.
That's if everyone used it three times a month. And that's including two uh, two vehicles that we would have to lease.
What was the final number again?
The final number was two hundred and three thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixteen cents.
And how much does one police rookie make?
Who would be a rookie?
No, I'm asking how much it is.
So, we have to take the average of a sergeant and an officer.
No, no, I just wanna know if we hired a new police officer, how much would he make?
I'd have to do the overtime rate, but uh, regularly, I believe it's sixty, sixty-one thousand, I believe.
Sixty-one thousand.
I believe so.
So, we could hire three police officers with that money?
Well, you have to include the French benefits and, and all of that.
Okay, so two, so two. Okay, so we could have two new police officers or a sergeant?
More or less.
I'm, let me, let me, well, first of all, I, I don't like the, that you have, that you were given the final approval, because it gives you, it puts you on a spot, because it's hard for you to wanna say no to us. It's, it puts you in a difficult situation to say no to us. Um, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm not really in favor of this. I, I would rather hire one or two police officers and have more security for everyone, everybody in our city than um, to have, and, and honestly, you know, you, it's um, three a month doesn't do anything for me. I, I would, I would need it thirty, almost every single day I have an event, so it, to me, y- you know, I, it doesn't benefit me. And um, I, I don't, look, we, we're commissioners, we're, we're here to serve, we're not here to, to take. And part of the um, and, and we do a lot, you know, we do, we all do a lot. We, sometimes people don't realize how much we, we give of our time and, and um, family life. And there, there are um, instances where residents do get mad at us. And um, I, and I, I feel for you because um, I wouldn't wanna be in your situation or put my children or my grandchildren in that situation. But um, I, I just can't, I, 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 I mean, I'll tell you something, the, the previous manager, I kept on telling him, "Get rid of the sergeant at arms, get rid of the sergeant at arms," and he wouldn't listen to me, and, and that was really the beginning of the end of, of whatever friendship we had, because um-
I'm not denying that, I just, like, if, 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 for me, like, I, I'm only, I was only requir- requesting it.
I'm sorry.
I was only requesting it because of this, because of the, like I said, they, they offered it me specifically, the opportunity to do this, cause of- Huh?
Maybe we should do that, how about that?
What, just?
From, my, 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 um, my, a suggestion, right? Um, because maybe what we can do is we can extend these sergeant-at-arms to the mayor's office. I mean, in federal government, they have tiers, right? And maybe we extend it to the mayor's office, and then for the commission, whoever wants to utilize it, use their contingency to pay for it. Maybe that's an idea, that we can, that we can all come to an agreement on.
We don't have, we'll run a, run a contingency in like, five minutes.
No, I mean, you, well, you have to be very selective on, on what you use. If you, if you want an officer for three hours, if it's eighty-five dollars an hour, that's what you're saying, the rate is?
Yes, a minimum of four hours.
A minimum of four hours, so you just know that you're gonna be spending somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred and thirty bucks, three hundred and forty bucks for that officer for that particular event. And, but the ma-, but the mayor's office has access to-
But it's still city money, we're still, it's still coming out of our contingency.
It'll be contingency.
It, it's not new, it's not new money, is, is what I'm saying. So, trying to find a compromise here.
Like I said, I just wanna, I just wanna be able to feel a little bit safer. Like I said, I wanted to bring it up. If it isn't, if it's not, if it's voted down, or there's not that option for me to feel that, then it is what it is, but at least I said I tried. That's all. And I, I can say that, I can look, I can go home and say that.
Okay, so, um, thank you. My, I have a, a different proposal altogether. Um, well, not really, actually, it's kinda piggybacks off of um, Commissioner Flormont, which is using the contingency fund. I think that that budget is allocated for you, you have the right to spend it how you want. And I personally think that, let's, our police department has a lot of work to do, and I don't wanna overwork them with overtime. What I'm thinking of is simply, how about you guys, like, go hire, like, um, detail, like, professional security that can be there all the time? I mean, you have kids and a wife and, you know, home, and you gotta go, some, I mean, like, there are services like that out there. And, you know, w- we can definitely approve that you can use a contingency fund for that. I just think that, like, our police officers, let's uh, keep them doing policing work. This is, we still have, I mean, there's still so much work to do. They're still new, we want them to have the ability to concentrate on the safety of our community versus like, actually, like, you know, worrying about taking care of us. And like, you know, we're here to serve as well. So, it's kinda like what um, Fortuna was saying before, I think I agree with that. So, that's my opinion.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I think the, the, the key to this discussion is the off-duty. Is that you're, you're saying we need to, they're off-duty, they're not, they're not on-duty.
Gotcha, off-duty.
And a volunteering for it.
And so, the-
Is, is, is an, you still need to be alert and awake and, and be active for it.
No, no, I guess the, the point I'm making is, it, the concern was, is, is there, are there gonna be less officers on the street if we have this program? These officers are off-duty, so they wouldn't, it's, we're not pulling them from their duties on the road.
I got you.
It's, they're off-duty officers already.
And it's like the same thing that's happening at, um- But we can hire two police officers, one or two more police officers at the rate that we're gonna pay. With that amount of money that we could, we could do, we could hire more police officers.
I have a question to the chief. You have ninety-nine officers currently, right?
Ninety-eight.
And ninety-nine, and you have room for one oh-seven. How's the recruitment going for filling that gap? Cause I know we've been talking about that. But, since we have the grant, what's the appetite for people to join the force? Because the, the six or seven officers that we're missing is not necessarily contingent on funding right now. It's more so, what's, what's, what's your take on that?
So, we, we are getting applicants in, they are, we are processing applicants. Um, unfortunately, you know, uh, we're not getting very qualified applicants, um, and they're not making it through the process for one reason or another. Those that do make it, uh, we have to wait for academy dates to open, send them to the academy, which takes six months, so it, it's a, we are, we don't have a problem getting applicants in. It's processing, getting them through the process and having them successfully go through the process. So, we are having, we are getting applicants in and we are interviewing them.
So, I wanna highlight that because our, our, the lack of hitting that quota is not because we don't have the funds, it's not because, you know, it's just that the process may take a while and also the applicants are not maybe where we want them to be. So, that's good for the public to know, because it's not like we're holding back from more officers being hired. There's just nuances to them going through the process.
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure that's on the record.
No, I don't know, Vice Mayor, it looks like you-
So, my recommended, my recommendation was like, I think private security would work really well. That's um, and, you know, if you need, I, I don't think you need to, for us to approve that you need to hire private security through your contingency fund, right?
I mean, not that, that I love the idea, but I guess there's nothing that says we can't use our contingency fund for it, for, for-
But this is a po-, this will set the policy of how we would use it. That's, that's what I'm saying, though. That sets the policy, so we do utilize it, the policy allows us to, that, that, it would, it would be contingent to that policy. So, like, we don't have one, like, it-
Right.
I'm not, or, you know, Blackwater.
No, I mean, I'm not saying to use a private, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying to use a contingency, there's nothing, there's nothing that, I think, prevents us from-
So, are you saying that, are you saying that you're in agreement with extending it to the mayor's office and having us use our contingency if we, if we were requesting it?
I mean, I think there's nothing that prohibits us from-
But having a policy makes, because a policy would make sense.
So, is the funding source what we're discussing right now?
What?
The funding source, like, where it's coming from?
We're saying if it comes from the contingency.
So, is that the only thing that's holding us back from approving it, or do we wanna table it?
I, 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 my motion, well, I haven't made a motion yet, but my suggestion was to extend it to the mayor's office. Right? And then for the commission, if we wanted to avail ourselves of that, um, of uh, the police department's assistance there, we should use our contingency.
No, I think if we, e- e- everybody has-
Everyone?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we're compromising, right? So-
I'm fine, for me, like, I don't, I-
But I, I wanna hear from everybody.
I'm fine with that.
I wanna hear your opinions about-
To use our contingency? Yeah, that's, it's just the funding source.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just, the policy to me makes sense, but I'm fine with the funding source being contingency. So, I, I'll make that motion.
Can you say, can you-
Okay, well, okay, so there was the valid concern about funding and those types of things. We've addressed the funding source by having the contingency be the funding source, so whatever, whatever amount of money you have, you gotta budget that accordingly. And um, as far as officers not being on the road, we've addressed that because they're off-duty officers. So, they were never gonna be on the road, they're off-duty. And the policy's here very clear, so that you're not, it's not one-offs, you're doing it based on a policy. So, I think that it's, you know, clear and ready to go. That's my motion to approve it.
So, it's a minimum of four hours?
Correct.
And it's eighty-five dollars, you said?
It's roughly eighty-four dollars. Cause we have to take the average, we have to uh, take into account that it could be a sergeant at a sergeant rate, or it could be an officer's rate, so we do a combination, and the average is eighty-four dollars an hour.
And, and um-
Minimum of four hours.
Just, just to be clear, uh, on this motion, if there are events that fall into the category where-
Of the SR-
SRT.
Of the SRT, or if it's a city function or a city event, those are completely different. They may be part of the policy, but that funding is completely different. What we're addressing is if one person needs a sergeant-at-arms, that would come from the contingency.
Correct.
So, so that's three hundred and thirty-six dollars minimum, assuming it's eighty-four dollars. Um, and then, is there any uh, like pension insur-, is that, isn't that eighty-four dollars, does it include everything, pension, insurance and all that, or is that additional?
That's just their rate of pay for that detail, so-
So, we're not, we're, we're in reality, that's not including, so it's really more than eighty-four an hour?
So, it's eighty-four dollars an hour and, of overtime, uh, which in their contract, it uh, three hundred hours of that is pensionable, I believe, so up to three hundred hours of overtime. So, if you wanted to factor that in, you could, but what the officer is gonna take home is eighty-four hours an hour, and it'll be deducted, tax will be deducted from that.
I need to think about it. What, I'd like to hear everybody's opinion on that, on this.
I'm, I'm, I would love to use some, because I would use it for, I would use my conti-, if that's the case, then look, it's better than not having anything, cause right now I got nothing. I've got, meaning that I have, like, I've been picking, I, I have no options. Like, the options are, I have a, it's a lack of, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna diminish what you guys are saying, but I have a, I have a, a finite number of my security. That's what it is. That's what you guys are agreeing, i- if this were to pass. It's a, it's a finite number on my security, so which, it's better than not having anything at all. So, I'm fine with that, because I can say, "Hey, but at least I tried." No, no, you- Yeah, 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 but, yeah, it's a finite number on my, on my security, which is, that's what you, that, yeah. No, 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 but, no, no, but no, it's based on like, I'm not having it, no, 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 I'd rather have something than nothing.
Do, do you, do you have like, any idea, like, or is there a way to figure, is there a way to figure out? Let's say on the three hundred and thirty-six dollars, like, how much of it is pension and, and stuff like that? Is there a way to figure it out? Not necessarily right now?
Yeah, I could, I could get that number for you, an estimate at least.
I, I mean, I'm, I almost wanna table it until I get that information, because-
Well, that number, that number, Commissioner-
And, and you have officer, you said you have officers?
They're trained for this.
We have officers that are, have gone to school, trained, and are certified.
But, but they're basically just gonna, so it's just a driver? I mean, like, to, to what extent are, I mean, are they gonna like, literally be walking behind us every second? Like, what, what are they gonna be doing?
So, it, it depends on, again, the, the, the venue you're at, the type of threat there is. If there's just a normal, no-threat, you know, uh, low-scale type of event, uh, would be one officer per commissioner, per two commissioners, per mayor, per commissioner, uh, plainclothes. And they're just there to make sure that, you know, everything is status quo. Had, should something occur, God forbid, they're trained on how to extract you properly, get you to where you need to be, the vehicles, everything scoped out already ahead of time.
And speaking of vehicle, that, that doesn't include gas and wear and tear on a vehicle?
Well, we'd have to rent a vehicle for that for the year.
Oh, so then we have to, that's not added into the-
So, it's thirty-four thousand dollars.
Thirty-four thousand, that's another, thirty-four thousand dollars we have to add in there. Yeah, but it's not part of the eighty-four dollars an hour.
I said renting, I meant leasing.
That's, that's not part of the eighty-four dollars an hour, that's, that adds up to a lot more than eighty-four dollars.
What happened to the previous vehicles that were, were used in the previous program?
Uh, those were borrowed from the city- Uh, those were borrowed from the city, uh, Public Works, which is kind of exchanged vehicles.
Can those, can those vehicles be borrowed?
I have, I don't even know where they are, not to be honest with you. I'd have to look for them.
You don't know where those vehicles are?
Well, because they were, they weren't ours. They, we shared them with the city. So, um, when the program got disbanded, I'm not sure if they went back to Public Works, or they went.
But can, can, but we do have a fleet, right?
Correct.
So why can't we just borrow the vehi- can't we just borrow the vehicles instead of leasing new ones? I mean, if, if, if we're gonna be doing this from a finite standpoint, like whatever we have on our contingency is on our contingency, so we don't necessarily have to, like, we're the, the, we're diminishing this policy substantially from what you guys threw out. So if we are, if this is on a seventy-two hour notice, like, and I, I'm sure there'll be vehicles in the fleet that could be utilized.
With all due respect, sir, I wouldn't, I wouldn't assume that there's vehicles really available for an event. I'd like to have vehicles ready to go, vehicles that our drivers are, you know, familiar with, vehicles that are, can be used for proper extraction of several people who need be. It can't just be in a vehicle.
And then we have to add gas, and I don't know if we pay insurance and wear and tear. So I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure the numbers are right. I mean, right now, we could be easily looking at a hundred and twenty dollars an hour.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
I, I'm-
You wanna speak first? You can speak first. I'll wait. But I wanna be next.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Okay, um, I honestly, like, this is how, how I feel. Okay, so, okay, I used to be a daughter of a business owner, right? So everything in the company, I get, I get dibs on. I get first dibs on everything. I take advantage of that. You know, I boss people around. I use them to drive my car. I do all kinds of things. I'm feeling like this is what that is right now, is me in my early twenties, like bossing people around in my, in my, you know, I mean, if I were to approve this sergeant-at-arms issue, it feels like I am like the daughter of the owner and I have the right to do anything I want because my dad's gonna side with me. Now, this is, for me, this is kind of ridiculous. I think we should leave the police officers and the P D to do what they need to do. And if you need security, I am like all for it. I don't wanna be insensitive towards how you feel unsafe because this is something that is so subjective. It's individual. I'm okay with that. But please, like, there are, I mean, how much, how meat, how much do we pay for security at the water plant? That's like there all the time. Can we like, you know, maybe ask them about, you know, to, to, to be part-time vendors for our, for our commissioner? You know the security we have at the water plant?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't think it's our police officers, is it?
No.
To your point, Vice Mayor, I think, I don't think we need to be facetious, but I do think that this concept is not something foreign to government. So it's not like we're creating the wheel. We're just deciding whether or not we wanna move forward. So it's not a foreign concept. This is a concept that cities, other cities have throughout the state. They have it on different levels of government. They have it. So it's not a, it's not a conversation of whether or not this is fabricated and we need to, you know, make parallels to other sectors.
I'm not talking about that.
Right, but what I'm saying is let's just make a decision. If we're gonna table, let's table it. If we think it's something feasible, let's move forward.
Okay, so I'm not for tabling it. I actually, like, I wanna put it up for a vote, cause we need to- I don't, I don't know.
There's, I don't think there's a, what's the, is there a second? Is there a motion?
Before I, before I even vote on it, I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear on what we're voting on, okay? Um, we were voting on, uh, Commissioner, uh, Smuckler. You, you were saying that you're okay with the contingency?
No, I, I changed my mind. I, I'm act, I'm not. It's, it's, it's come, we don't have those numbers, so, uh, it's, eighty-four dollars an hour is not realistic.
Motion to table.
Second. So we're just gonna, I write, I write the table because I want the num- one, the one thing I do wanna find out is if, because I know that, um, the H R director is here. Cause I really want, cause I, what I was really thinking about is getting the, like, people that are retired to do this more than anything else. I did not want, and the reason why, and like, the reason why it is, um, you know, these officers that are, um-
Yeah, we didn't approve the table.
No, what, no.
We had to vote on the table.
But are, are we, are we saying that we want them to go get that information and come back? That's what we're tabling, right?
Well, I mean, my-
We have to vote on whether we approve the tabling or not.
Well, it hasn't been moved, it hasn't been-
They, a motion and a second was made to table it, don't we have to vote on it to see if we wanna table it or continue on with a regular vote?
Technically speaking, uh, what we call a motion to table unless really specifically intended, is a motion to defer to a time certain usually is how it's done.
If it's, if I, if it's my-
But don't we have to vote on it?
I have a question. If this is my item, can I, well, it's not my item, it's the Chief's item. Um, can it be pulled?
In my opinion, once debate has started on an item, it's up to the commission to pull it, not to an individual. Now, that sponsor can, or a member can always request that and the commission can approve that if, if, if it's somebody's item. You can say, listen, I wanna do this, but it still does require a vote.
I make a motion to vote on it.
Okay.
Well, there's a, there's a, um, there was a motion to table, so.
I just corrected, just to say only that unless the sponsor directly, completely feels otherwise, that should be read as a motion to postpone or defer to a time certain, which is generally the next commission meeting. But that motion was made in seconds. Now, it can be voted down, and then you can move to a vote.
That's what I'm saying. We never voted on it. Can I say that? Okay, thank you.
So that, yeah, on the table, right? On the motion to table?
I, I said we didn't vote on, I said we didn't vote on the motion to table, and then everybody's jabbering about whatever.
Right, so on the motion to table, that was my question to you, Commissioner. So we're tabling to a time certain for them to come back with the full details of what the per-hour cost would be? Because it's not, it's not detailed here.
We have to, um, we, it doesn't matter. We have to see if we're approving the motion to table.
It's a mo- let me say again.
Right.
It's a motion to defer to a time certain being the next meeting. That's what the motion is technically, unless the sponsor-
I'm asking you, do we have to vote on this or not?
Yes.
Okay, so can we vote?
On that motion.
Okay, so let's vote.
But, Commissioner. As you said, there was still conversation. The point is that a motion to defer to a time certain to a specific meeting, you can still have discussion about it before you vote on it. And that's what's occurring. There's nothing that says, I mean, there are some motions that are non-debatable, but not typically in front of this body. And if there is discussion, then you finish the discussion before you vote on it. Unless you call the question or, or move the question. If you call the question, which doesn't really even exist, but it's a convenience that people use, then if there's no objection, you move to a vote. But if there is objection to it, cause somebody wants to keep talking, you have the privilege of moving the question, which takes a two-thirds vote, but that ends debate.
Oh, so we got a motion and a second to table?
A motion to defer to a time certain the next meeting unless the sponsor specifically intended otherwise. Because motion to table was sometimes, it doesn't say if it ever comes back off the table. That's the difference.
Time certain to the next meeting.
All right. All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Want to oppose?
Oppose.
I oppose. No.
The motion fails. Okay, it's three-three, man. If I counted right, you could ask for show of hands. Maybe I heard wrong.
So the item doesn't, telling you to have-
Wait, wait, if, if, if I heard correctly, maybe I'm wrong. You might wanna do show of hands. It looked to me like it was three-three.
It was three-three.
It was three-three, right?
So, so, it fails.
This is exactly what I just said we needed to do, was to vote. So I don't know why you went into this gibberish, dabberish thing when I said let's just vote already.
So you wanna call him?
No, no, I understood you to mean vote on the underlying item, not on the motion.
No, on the motion to table.
That was not clear, I'm sorry. That was not-
So the, the, the motion to ta- the motion to defer to a certain-
I don't wanna talk about it anymore.
Fails three-three.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so it, it, the item fails.
The deferment fails.
The defer, the deferment fails. The item hasn't-
The item is still in progress.
The item ha- okay, so the main item is still, the ma- the main item is still, um-
So you need a motion to approve what was-
And I, and, and, and the thing is, there's no motion-
And that's the reason why, Mr. Mayor, with all, with, with all due respect, I was trying to figure out with Commissioner Smuckler, if she wanted her questions answered as to the full cost per hour, which after hearing about a vehicle pension, et cetera, what percentage is going to be allocated towards pension benefits? What percentage is gonna be allocated towards vehicle? And so that eighty-five dollar number, as she said, may be a hundred, a hundred and two dollars. We don't know.
It's like a lot more.
So what that number would be for them to come back with that number. Is that what you're looking for?
No, let's just vote already.
Okay.
And before we vote, Ms. Aunt Chief, can you find out if there, we can locate those vehicles? What happened to those vehicles that were either, you know, fleet or what have you, where they are?
I will, I'll get back to you.
Okay, so, you know, what do we, so we're voting on the item as, as is?
You need a motion.
So we don't get a-
Motion to approve, motion to deny. Motion to approve, motion to reject, however you wanna phrase it.
Motion to, a, motion to approve with the amendment of the, of the, of the source, the funding source.
Second.
All right, can you, um, all in favor of aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
No.
Fails three-three.
That's it.
Yeah.
You said you had different discussions to the meeting.
Yes.
No.
Defer, I guess defer the discussion. I just don't wanna have a pileup later on. Uh, but yeah, um, there's only, there's only three discussion items, right?
Four.
Oh, four.
One, two, three, four, five.
Okay, may, may I?
Well, the trolley, the trolley thing's not there anymore. The trolley thing's not there anymore since we took care of that.
The traffic calming, the-
So there's four, right?
Yeah, five. Traffic calming project.
Oh, then we'll, then, then we'll, we'll defer those items to the next meeting, um, those discussion items. All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait, wait.
No, wait. I'm gonna, hold on one second. Um, I need to, I need to have this question. I, I need to ask you about this meeting.
Okay, wait, I'm sorry. I just wanna, before you do that, I just wanna make sure that fifteen point two is not something that we really need to talk about, that it could hold off. It's the traffic calming projects. We, we can hold that one off. It's a discussion, but you know, if we keep on holding things off, then I just wanna make sure.
We do need to talk about it. Okay.
So we, we table the discussions the next meeting?
No, she, no.
We did, we voted for it.
If we, if needed, a second meeting in the month is called, right? And if we have these issues that we are dealing with, for example, okay, traffic calming, we are talking about Black and Beach Transition Plan, this is something that, um, we had held funds back. And, uh, this is, Commissioner Floramont had held funds back for it, only paying four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for three months. If we don't decide on this transition plan-
No.
Two. This is month two.
Yeah, we're out for the three, three months.
Oh, so you wanna wait till last minute and then we decide?
Well, to, to, through, through the chair.
Yeah.
We had a discussion, Mr. Manager, about some of the ask for, to have a clear comparison, like the, the C I P plan, the, your workflow for the, for that particular department. Are we ready to discuss those things? Are those things ready to be addressed as well?
We, we can, uh, move into the discussion, uh, beyond the Black and Beach, yes.
That is a long discussion.
Okay, but it's a, we, no, he missed it.
No, no, that, that, I, no, I missed it.
Okay, it's eleven eighteen. Can we, we need to discuss these things. It been on, if we just keep on adding stuff-
I, I say, we can just go to the Black and Beach and then we'll table everything else and take it from there.
Unless we wanna go past midnight.
How does that pass? The, it's the exit plan, right? I mean, this is a-
I'm willing to go and discuss everything until midnight. But let's start already, cause we just wasted like two minutes.
I, I thought we, okay, so-
No, I didn't finish voting.
No, 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 no. Okay, so I make, okay, I wanna make the motion right now, right? I wanna table the remainder of the, of the discussion items currently, so we can adjourn for- Do I have, do, okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
We got two, so they, yeah, yes.
Motion to adjourn.
So move. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
All right, we adjourn.
Thank you.